Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this council meeting, council workshop, to order. Do we have, I yield to Councilman Citro for today's invocation and to welcome our guest. After the invocation, as we are standing, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. After the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll sit, and I'm going to yield to Councilmember Gudes, and then we'll begin the meeting. So, Councilman Citro, take it away.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, thank you for my, excuse my tardiness. Today, I do have the pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to introduce to you Tampa's poet laureate. He will not only be giving us the invocation, but he will be giving, reciting one of his poems that he gave many years ago. Please take heed to his words. These words are very, very strong, and if we could all please rise for Mr. Tokely, his invocation and his poem.
Today, we pray the people's prayer. A prayer of ethics, common sense, and constitution, free and clear, that leads us, trust and hope leads us hence. And as done in decades past, we dedicate both our hearts and souls to counsel democratic fast and past, whose wisdom is the bottom far and bold. We pray for all the days of counsel democratic ways, and in so doing, may we keep the people's spirit strong and deep. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need roll call before we speak? Let's do roll call first. Roll call?
Dean Felder.
Yes.
Gudes.
Here.
Meniscalco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Vieira.
All right. I now yield to Councilmember Orlando Gudes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Citro, it's just a surprise that you have Mr. Tokely here, one of my mentors and someone who got me through darker days when I was a young police officer coming on, of course. And yesterday was a dark day, last night was a dark night for me. When I come to council today and I see Mr. Tokely here, I see light. We always talked about, no matter what situations, you always face them and move on. But I have a public statement I'd like to make for a press release and to let the public know that what my character is. I'd like to address something that happened yesterday that might have fueled a few people in our city. As many of you know, the local newspaper ran a story regarding a conversation I had with a reporter. It was reported that I made an anti-Semitic comment. As an African-American man who has faced great amounts of discrimination in my personal career, I'm acutely aware of the dangers of discrimination. Those who know me best know that I do not hold any hostility or prejudice against anyone. I've spoken to my colleagues on council, and they can attest that my desire to make Tampa a better place for everyone. Our future is bright, and it's important for us to remain focused on improving the lives of every resident in this community. I apologize for this distraction. My plan for the city of Tampa is to build a more unified city that we'll all love and are proud to call our home. I love Tampa. I love the residents of our city, and I'm here to work on the behalf of everyone, regardless of where they live, who they love, or where they worship. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, we now go to ceremonial activities and presentations. I believe the Police Officer of the Month is going to be rescheduled. Come quick.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to, can I just say one thing about James Tokely?
Sure.
Just, sorry, I called him Professor Tokely. When I was a student at the University of Tampa, I started out as a poetry major, and he was one of the most important professors that I had at the University of Tampa. And I stayed in touch with him over the years, and he was a mentor and consultant to me and my firm. I've done a bad job staying in touch in the last five or so years, but I just want to say how much I appreciate him inspiring me early in my career. I ended up not becoming a poet, but I've always been inspired by his words and his efforts in the community. I just want to thank him for everything he's done over his career.
Mr. Chair, before, before I give commendations, I'd also like to say that Mr. Tokely was recognized as the poet laureate by our distinguished mayor Dick Greco in 1996, and then by the Hillsborough County as their poet laureate in 2013. He earned his master's degree in English of Education from Temple University and his doctorate of education, his PhD in American literature from the University of South Florida. Go Bulls! His wife is going to be here today, and I hope that we have a chance to recognize her. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I need to make a motion that Senior Corporate Jared Downs join us next month. Jared is out in training today. He is in, I believe, Fort Lauderdale, and he's training other TPD officers how to help us better. So hopefully I can get a second on that motion, and if it's all right, we can do two Officers of the Month next month.
So we have a motion from Councilman Citro, rescheduling the Police Officer of the Month commendation to next month. We have a second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next up, we have a presentation of commendation for the firefighter of the quarter. Councilman Citro.
With honor.
Ladies and gentlemen, I know I say this constantly about TPD. We have a program, ladies and gentlemen, the Tampa Fire Rescue Citizens Academy. If you wish to see what these brave women and men do to help keep us safe, please, I ask that you attend one of these Citizens Academies and see exactly what they do. Now, I'm sorry, I, my grammar is not good today, but today Captain David Hoem Thanner, was that close?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Because of your dedication to service, where is he at? Come over here. Right here. Because of his dedicated service to the community, to excellence, and going above and beyond the call of duty, you have been chosen for this mark of distinction as firefighter of the quarter. Tampa City Council, your peers and supervisors would like to commend you for your dedication and diligence. We recognize your leadership in ensuring the airport rescue, rescue and firefighters, what is it, the ARFF Division, successfully transitioning the chain of command, and countless hours you have volunteered in training other members, and your passion and dedication for helping others in our community. I'm going to step aside because I know that there is someone here that is going to give you even more accolades, so you stay right where you are.
Thank y'all for having me. On behalf of Fire Chief Nick LaCisro, I'd like to take the opportunity to present Captain David Hoem Thanner as Tampa Fire Rescue's Firefighter of the Quarter. Captain Hoem Thanner is a 22-year veteran with Tampa Fire Rescue, who has a diverse background with Tampa Fire Rescue, which includes airport firefighting, has material operations and fire prevention practices. Captain Hoem Thanner was previously awarded a Medal of Valor for assisting Tampa Fire, Tampa Police Department SWAT team with removing a violent suspect from a burning apartment that the suspect had booby traps with propane tanks with intent to harm first responders. In addition, Captain Hoem Thanner was off duty at a holiday event when a citizen collapsed from a heart attack. Captain Hoem Thanner's quick response to the citizen, he provided CPR to assist the citizen, and because of his quick actions, the citizen has made a complete recovery this day. Captain Hoem Thanner has been a key figure in the production of videos that are shown at the Firefighter Awards banquet by volunteering his time and equipment to capture the footage that highlight Tampa Fire Rescue's personnel at their best. Captain Hoem Thanner's efforts in this area have been recognized at a national level as evident by his video, "The Tampa Fire Rescue New Recruit Receiving the International Gold Award in Hollywood." Captain Hoem Thanner has also produced a video, "One Team, One Fight Explosive Awareness", that was used to train and prepare law enforcement personnel prior to the 2012 RNC. Captain Hoem Thanner has recently developed and successfully presented a new FAA standards course that allows for high-quality training for newly assigned personnel to the airport division. Captain Hoem Thanner has a passion for helping others, and it is evident by his charitable contributions to multiple community organizations, including Lee Dittman's Foundation, Shriners Hospital, Give Kids the World Foundation, Metropolitan Ministries, Feeding Tampa Bay, and the Laxa Family Foundation. Captain Hoem Thanner has had a dedicated his career to improving our organization by being a leader, developing training initiatives, volunteering his time, and extending a helping hand to community organizations. And it is for this reason listed here today that Captain Hoem Thanner has been selected as Tampa Fire Rescue Firefighter of the Quarter.
Good morning, council. Thank you once again for allowing us to recognize our very own. I'm District Chief Orrin Hanson. I'm also the chairman of the Awards Review Board. When we get these candidates that come in quarterly, sometimes it's very hard to find one that we can kind of delineate which ones have got a little bit more of an edge than the others, and this was definitely one of those where it was very hard to, but Captain Hoem Thanner has given us a lot of things to recognize him for. And on behalf of the Awards Review Board, I'd like to honor him with the first quarter of the year, firefighter of the quarter.
Good morning, council. Joe Greco, Tampa Firefighter's local president. Andrew Carter, vice president. We'd just like to give Dave an award, this recognition plaque, and a gift card and say congratulations on the firefighter of the quarter.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, council members, and good morning, Captain. I'm Bob Kinnigliar with Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants, and on behalf of our over 4,000 employees, I'd like to recognize you not just for what that profile said, but for being significant. And we're all put here to serve in our capacities, whatever they are, and you serve in an outstanding manner, and we are just so proud to give you a small token of our appreciation. Dinner for four and some tchotchkes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good morning, Captain. Good morning, council. Donna McBride with Strass Center for the Performing Arts. Captain, we are so glad to have a person of your character and your knowledge in our community, and on behalf of the 600,000 people that our center serves each year, you keep us safe, and you keep us safe day and night. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
I have for you a packet that has tickets to the Broadway show, Jersey Boys, and also some tickets to AMC Theaters. Please enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Morning, council. Michael Kilgore, Gosmart Family Restaurants. On behalf of the Gosmart family, we celebrate 115 years continuous family ownership this year. Have a gift card for $115. Come dine with us. Thank you so much for what you do.
Good morning, council. Hi, I'm Lisa with the DoubleTree Tampa Airport. Thank you so much for what you do. We have a two-night stay for you and your family, with breakfast for two, and of course, tons of DoubleTree cookies. Now you get two because there's no police officer of the month.
Right.
These are risky.
Good morning, council. Leah Van Name with Tampa Theater. Captain, congratulations. On behalf of Tampa Theater, I'm honored to give you a membership to the theater. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Good morning, council. My name is Jonathan St. Giorgio, an intern at the Tampa Huesberry Expressway Authority, and on behalf of that organization, I'd like to present a token of my appreciation to you, and God bless you.
Thank you. God bless you.
Good morning, Mary Lou Bailey. I'm here on behalf of Zoo Tampa. Thank you for your service, and in recognition of that, the citizens who volunteer on the Board of Directors has provided you with a year-long family membership to Zoo Tampa, and it includes admission to our special events and things. And please come out with your family and friends and love nature.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Captain. Morning. How you doing? Good. How you doing?
Morning, council. Mike McArthur, Steps Towing Service. On behalf of Todd Step, Steps Towing Service, you've got a lot of places to go, so take a night out in our company limousine, $50 Bass Pro gift card. Congratulations, you earned it. Take your time, Austin.
Appreciate it.
Good morning, council. Pete Braby, Busch Gardens, Tampa. As I always say, thank you for your continued support of obviously the firefighter of the quarter and the police officer of the month. It's great to see that you recognize these community heroes, and thank you again for allowing us to be part of it, as well as all the other community partners. And sir, I'd just like to thank you from Stuart Clark and the Busch Gardens employees in Adventure Island of Tampa. Thanks for keeping our community safe, and thanks for preparing the future generation of firemen and women to go on and serve as you do. And as a token of our appreciation, we need you for tickets to our park, and you can ride with Mike's limo and come see us.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How are you?
Wonderful.
How you doing? Great. Steve Michelini. First, I'd like to reach out and thank all of the people for Tampa Fire Rescue for the great job they did at Gasparilla, and also for the Tampa Police Department and all the law enforcement folks. I think it's really important, you know, a lot of the folks that support you and these Officers of the Month and the firefighters of the quarter, they recognize what you do. And so we just wanted to say thank you for doing a great job for us. Jim Carson can't be here today, and is the, is the overhead on? So, so, so he's going to give you this car later. But, but this is the best that I, we could do overnight was to give you this 2020 Mustang that, that you're going to get to take home.
Very nice. Thank you.
This is your receipt.
This is it right here. I love you. I love you. Thank you for that.
Prestige Portraits is going to provide you with the gift certificate so you can go have your family portraits taken. The Chichos Restaurant Group is providing you with your, your choice, breakfast, lunch, or dinner, their restaurants. On behalf of Forbiachi Restaurant in Hyde Park, and if you haven't been there, you're going to get to go there now and enjoy yourself. Yummy House China Bistro, great place, and all the firefighters like to go with you on that one, so you better guard this one. And then the Tampa YMCA is providing you with a gift certificate so you can go enjoy yourself there. Again, thank you again for all the first responders who did a great job, and I think everyone had a, had a wonderful time in Gasparilla, and thank you again for your dedication.
Captain, it is the honor of Tampa City Council to present you this commendation the 30th day of January 2020, and let's get one quick, couple quick pictures here, because I know, Captain, the success means nothing unless you have someone to share it with, and you have your family here, so please, now is your turn.
Yes, sir. Thank you and good morning, city council members, the mayor, Fire Chief LaCisro, his executive staff, the awards committee, Local 754, the businesses and business owners that have provided me with these gifts today. Thank you. My crew, everybody I've served with here, I appreciate all we've done together and thank you for hanging out with me. And most of all, my family, my mom, dad, sister, and my son Dylan. The last 22 years have gone by in a blink of an eye, and it's said, you choose a job you love and you will never work a day in your life. There are two different times I realized this phrase was true for me. The first was the beginning of my career, working alongside our brothers and sisters of Tampa Fire Rescue. They are simply the best at what they do, and knowing I was a member of that family now gave me great pride. The second time, there's something special that happens in your heart and soul when you're a part of a family, that helps someone, whether it's a medical call, a structured fire, or just simply helping grandma back in bed, and just simply giving back. This was the confirmation I had found my dream job, and that's when this job became a career. I'm honored by my son Dylan, who has followed in my footsteps, who is currently a firefighter with Plant City, knowing that he will have the same fulfillment in life that I have had. And I pray one day he will be able to join the TFR family. Being here today confirms I made the right choice with Tampa Fire Rescue, where I've been truly blessed to live, work, and play in this great city. I humbly accept this award, and thank you.
Do any council members have any comments or wish to make any remarks?
Well, you know, again, thank you for your service. It takes a lot to do what you do. I think myself and Mr. Councilman Citro have experienced some of that firsthand, and being on the job for 26 years, I know what you guys go through, and the award is very deserving. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir.
Councilmember Carlson.
Thanks again to you and all your colleagues for all you do every day. The first story that you all mentioned sounds like a movie script. I would love to hear the rest of it at some point. It sounds really interesting. I'm sure it was harrowing and stressful, but thanks for all you do to put your lives on the line to help save our citizens.
Councilmember Miranda.
Captain, I just want to say that what you spoke about, if you go to work, and you consider it work, and you're doing your job, you're one fantastic employee. If someone has to go to work every day and think that they don't want to go to work, they shouldn't go to work, they should do something else. But in your case, I understand it wholeheartedly. You're very fortunate to have the opportunity that few of us have, to go to work, and you consider it not working, consider doing something to help somebody else. And thank you for all your years of service. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Captain, I'm sure I can say this for all the city council, public safety is the number one. Thank you for keeping us safe. Thank you, officer.
Thank you.
We'll pull away the mugs.
Good job. I'll be there. I'll be there. We'll never see the cookie.
Yeah, probably not. Although they may already be gone. They were in some, you know, some hands, it looks like they might have been done.
It was close. Y'all almost did me this.
I'm sorry.
All right, we will now go to public comment. Public comment is three minutes per speaker. If you would approach the lectern and state your name and address for the record.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Gina Grimes, City Attorney. If I may, I'd like to just take a few minutes to introduce you to the newest member of the staff of the City Attorney's Office. Some of you may already know her, Susan Johnson Velez. Susan, you want to stand up? Susan is a local land use lawyer that's been practicing in front of city council and other boards for decades. And we finally were able to twist her arm hard enough to get her to join our staff. But some of you, what you may not know about Susan is she has, you know, quite a degree of experience. Before joining our office, she had her own law practice for 20-plus years. Before that, she was a partner in the law firm of Fowler White. And before that, she was an assistant county attorney. And more recently, Susan has also served as the president of the Hillsborough County Bar Association, as well as the president of the George Edgcombe Bar Association. And even as recently, I think as a month ago, she was the chairman of the Tampa Housing Authority Board of Directors. So she has quite a resume and a lot of real deep experience. And I wanted to introduce you to her right now, this morning, because tonight she will actually be representing you on the alcohol beverage application petitions. She will also be appearing in front of you with respect to land use and zoning appeals coming from the staff to city council whenever anyone appeals those. And so I present to you Susan Johnson Velez.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
So I think all we need are Truett Gardner, John Grandal, and Dave Mechanic, and we'll have all the attorneys that come before us have joined us because we're such a great place to work. I don't blame you. I don't blame you.
Really, what you say is true. Because we wouldn't be able to bring the type of people that we have on board, including people here in the audience, Andrea Zelman, Kate Wells, private sector lawyers. We wouldn't be able to bring them on board if it wasn't, if there wasn't this atmosphere right now with, you know, all of the innovation and change that the mayor's advancing and that the city council has been supporting. People wouldn't be leaving successful private sector careers if we didn't feel that this was an organization we're excited to join. And with that, I feel the same way. With that, we appreciate your support.
Welcome, and thank you. We appreciate all your service to this community because you've served in a variety of roles. I've known you since I started back in 2015, and you're joining a great team. You're working with Ms. Grimes, who's wonderful, who has plenty of experience here. And I think, you know, working at the greatest city in America, you know, it has its perks. So we're glad to have you. Anybody else have any comments?
If I was to tell her that I'm newer than I first started, she'd be 105 years old. I'm not going to tell her that. But thank you for coming back with the growl that you have here now. We have a team of lawyers now that I think that can handle any type of case load in America. Thank you very much for joining the team.
Councilman Carlson, Councilman Cetro.
And Ms. Grimes, you know, thank you to the mayor for setting the tone and vision everything, but thank you for the cool factor of creating, attracting all these great people back.
Thank you.
Thank you. You and I have known each other for a long time, me before I was elected. And I've always enjoyed the work that you've done. Thank you for being with us.
Councilman Good.
Well, Ms. Grimes, you've done it again. You're building that bench, and that's what it's all about, building the bench to the best people to move things along. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be aboard. And I will see you all this evening.
We'll see you then. Thanks. All right, we will go to the public comment. Three minutes per speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Christopher Vella. I live at 9241 Half, East 11th Avenue, Ybor City, 33605. So coming up in your agenda will be a presentation on a wonderful transportation plan that would offer restoration in our neighborhood. Currently, the interstate divides 40 neighborhood districts that are identified by the city of Tampa. The interstate goes through every single CRA that we have, with the exception of the Channel Side District. So with the Boulevard itself, it is about reconnecting the neighborhoods. Currently, we only have 21 points where we can connect our east and west neighborhoods. With the Boulevard, we can double that to 42 points. What's going to be amazing about this project, it trims the fat of the I-275 footprint. So with that, we're going to see up to 35 acres of land space. We're going to have parks, new development, libraries, schools, civic centers. Nothing that has been put out by FDOT or, you know, by RDOT has been proven to be restorative to our neighborhoods. This is also going to reduce climate footprint. We don't have a transportation plan right now on the table that reduces single occupancy vehicles. We don't have a plan on the table that reduces our carbon footprints. We know that air particulates, whether it's from the vehicle emissions, brake dust, rubber tires that are debris that's coming off the highway system, that is all very bad, and it does hurt our health. That is particularly really important in our CRA areas, where we do have a health crisis. And we've talked about this a lot, especially around the university area as well. So this would help with our goals for our health and our transit studies. And when I talked about the restoration thing, I wanted to talk about Ybor. We are a survivor of redlining, urban renewal, interstate construction, and operation improvements that have removed thousands of homes. In the 1960s, when I-4 was put in place, we lost 600 homes in Ybor. And then in the early 2000s, we lost over 300 more. Right now, the historic resources in our city, along with the state, have identified approximately 955 historic properties. And we do have a tremendous amount of contributing structures. Now, in the midst of all that, we only had 64 properties that were relocated. None of the studies include any type of neighborhood conditions or historic street grid. And so originally, FDOT wanted to remove 1,000 properties. Now, the Boulevard project will not do that. It would actually provide opportunities for redevelopment and reconnecting the neighborhood. And with that said, when we have presentations like this, we need to afford a lot more time than 10 minutes. And also, I want you all to remove the 14 and 15th Street exit that's being proposed by Tampa Next Project, and say no to plastic bags. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good morning, Johnny Johnson. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the councils that came out to Fair Oaks and took time out to see what the constituents in the community want for themselves and not what someone else sent a bike behind a diocese or a desk demanding that they have. So thank you first and foremost for that. And you guys that came out, you've seen the community speak loud. That go to show making a time and a date for the community, they will show up and voice their opinion. So again, so for the future, you have learned something. People work in the morning times, a long enough period of time preparation is everything, and people will come and voice their opinion, unless you're trying to do something behind their back. So we learned something that last Thursday is that the community want a new building, a high-tech facility, so that kids and the seniors can have the right tools to move forward along with the rest of the city of Tampa and be productive citizens in our communities. As well as bike to the CRA, you have from East 56 all the way to West, and I'm talking Hillsborough, down past 22nd, down 15th. Hillsborough Road is horrible. The potholes, the street, I just called a flat, had some other people have tire problems and stuff. But you can get from I-4, from 75, coming south into downtown, the interstate is getting redone. We passed a one-cent tax. Hillsborough and our community should have been one of the first projects with the death, with the lights and the kids crossing the streets and stuff. So I would appreciate if someone can go out there and look at Hillsborough, up in 22nd area, down to 56, from the casino up to the casino and bike west. It's horrible. Once you get up by the casino, an I-4 area, you got a smooth ride. There's no potholes. There's nothing. So that's something to take in consideration that all of Hillsborough County need, again, to look appropriate and the same, because we're all up under one umbrella. Again, I appreciate you coming out to Fair Oaks. We want a new building. Band-aids will not help. There's no fire sprinklers, a safety hazard, and none of you will want your kids in that predicament. So please, don't allow our kids to be in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person.
Good morning, Council. My name is Rick Fernandez, 2906 North Elmore, Tampa, 33602. It's Tampa Heights. By way of introduction, I'm currently the Transportation Chair for the Tampa Heights Civic Association and former president of that association. I sit on the MPO-CAC as the vice chair and serve as representative of this body on the Offer Transportation Independent Oversight Committee, having been appointed by the previous council. Some of you were on that appointing committee at the time. I'm here today in support of the Boulevard project. Josh Frank will be making a presentation to you in just a few minutes. I understand he has a 10-minute slot on the agenda. I've heard this presentation in one form or another over the course of the last three or four years, and I don't know that the presentation has ever taken less than an hour to present. And even then, there's a lot of crumbs left on the table for you to understand the project in total. So please understand what you're about to hear is nothing more than a prelim of the whole project. And for those of you who maybe are seeing it as a matter of first impression, you're only getting a very small taste. I wanted to remind the council, in case you didn't know in the first instance, that the Boulevard project is something that percolated out of the charrette process that was originally constituted around the Tampa Bay Express project that was proposed by Florida Department of Transportation back in 2015. They held a number of community information meetings, charrettes, as they phrase them. And the Boulevard idea percolated from that. Josh took it and ran with it academically and presented a full-blown vision, which is part of what he's going to be showing you today. But please understand that what you're going to be hearing today was something that was seeded in the community, Tampa Heights, Seminole Heights, Ybor City, West Tampa. Also understand that this is a project that has been, from inception, supported by the Tampa Heights Civic Association. The MPO-CAC last year recommended to the MPO Board a study of this project that was near unanimous out of the CAC. And the MPO Board approved that recommendation, also by unanimous vote. And that study is now pending. What I'm asking here of you today is that the city council use its bully pulpit in support of this project. It is a long-term vision. I may not see, I may not live to see it to fruition, but it is something that is vision-worthy, and it is a leadership void that we're looking to fill now that I think you are uniquely positioned to help fill. So I hope you will listen intently. You will carry forward with more study, and that you will recommend adoption of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
How's it going? My name's Anthony Kroll. I'm a weirdo artist. You've seen some of my work with my wife out in West Tampa. Guido was there. Citro was there. We painted the faces of West Tampa mural with EJ Salsinas and, you know, some of those other people in the community. All right, so I'm here in support of the Boulevard projects as well. We need to give this project more time, and I'll go into why. This is going to get kind of out there, so if you guys just bear with me. So I'll let the other people who are experts at urban design, who will speak on blogs, from people like Jeff Speck, Brent Todarian, and those other people who have kind of guided Josh Frank, Rick Fernandez, and some of these other people in the community who've done this research, I'll let them speak on urban design specifically, but let me just give you an introduction to it so you understand it. Everything's designed. Obviously, communities are designed. The way city council is organized is designed. From an artist's perspective, design is kind of divine. It's super important, right? The way your desk is designed, the way that projector's designed, the way this screen is designed. That's all design. So on a big level, design is important. That's my point. So I'll go ahead and get kind of weird. So design encompasses everything. So let's take a trip to the 60s. I wasn't alive then, but you might be able to see where this is going. Think of why God designed our planet to have a moon to regulate the tides and slow the Earth's orbit. You know, the moon exists because it makes the Earth inhabitable. There's example of good design. Thanks, God. Whatever, for the public. Within the universe, there are examples of good design and bad design, right? Nature provides good design, proven by science. People, when thinking about the greater good of other people, create good design. Simple, right? People, when creating design that is focused on something other than people, create bad design. If people design things not thinking about the greater good of other people, it's bad design. Maybe I made my point. I don't know. Communities are designed. This isn't a monastery. This room isn't a monastery. It's designed by a community. FDOT isn't a monastery. Their ideas aren't just, oh, this is what it is. It's an organization that people suggest how they design things, right? FDOT's focus is designing for cars. That's what they do. Your focus, as a city council, is designing for people. That's what you do for your community, right? So these agencies that we put in place don't really work for cars. They work for people. I'm out of time.
Thank you very much, sir.
But if I could just kind of, real quick, keep going.
Can I give him 30 more seconds?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good. So we'll go back to the 60s. I took you guys on a trip real quick, you know, hey, God, hello. Back, we're going to go back to the 60s. So Robert Moses, throughout the whole entire country, civil engineering and civil rights kind of merged together during that time, right? So we're going back, our MLK, we're going back to the 60s. What I mean by civil engineering is the American highway system. That went over a lot of black communities. You can research this all over the United States. It was bad design. The interstate system was bad design. No matter how you spin it today, that's why we're going back and we're saying this needs more attention because this Boulevard project reverses that bad design.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
All right. Next speaker, please.
My name is Pastor Frank Williams, located at 1112 East Scott Street. And I thank that young man just follows over with them beautiful comment. Everything is done by design, and God designed the whole world. And we thank God for His goodness and His blessing and His graciousness. You know, I want to read some scriptures because we're living in a time now where you've got so many people that don't believe in God, and I feel sorry for them. But this is what John says in the Book of Revelation. "I saw a new heaven and a new earth. For the first heaven and the first earth were passed away, and there was no more sea. And I, John, saw the Holy City, New Jerusalem, come down from God out of heaven, prepared as a bride adorned for her husband. I heard a great voice out of heaven saying, 'Behold, the tabernacle of God is with man, and he will dwell with them, and they shall be his people, and God Himself shall be with them and be their God. And God shall wipe away all tears from their eyes, and there shall be no more death, neither sorrow, nor crying, nor neither, neither there be any more pain. For the former things are passed away. And he that sat upon the throne said, 'Behold, I make all things new.' And he said unto me, 'Right, for these are words of truth and faithful.'" You know, we must tell God, not every day, but every moment of our life, God, thank you for your many blessings that you have bestowed upon me, my family, and everybody else. And be gracious to God, because God is gracious to us. A lot of us might not make it in, but I'm here to try to tell you, believe in Jesus Christ and accept Him as your Lord and Savior. And I guarantee you, regardless of what we go through on this earth, it's going to be a whole lot better in heaven. And you know what? I tell you all this not because I hate you. I tell you this because I love you. I want you to be saved. I want everybody to be saved. And accept God, accept Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior. I've been preaching now for about 50 years, and I thank God that He anointed me to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ. And I'm not here for no popularity show or nothing. I'm here to try to do the will of God. You know why? Because God's been so good to all of us. I used to say God's been so good to me, but now He's been good to everybody. And we must tell Him, thank you. Don't go around with frowns on your face. Keep a smile on your face, and let people know that you're believing in Jesus Christ and you love everybody. I don't hate nobody, regardless of how they treat me. I hate nobody. I love everybody. But I know people hate me, but that's their... But I know people hate me, but that's their pop, that's them, that's not on me. And I just love to praise and glorify my heavenly Father. Thank y'all for hearing me. God bless all of you.
Thank you for your beautiful words. Amen. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Bishop Michelle B. Patty. I would like to also thank the councilmen's that came out on last Thursday, Councilman Joseph Citro, Councilwoman Miranda Goos, and Councilwoman Bill Carson. We want to thank Janelle McGregor, who's the liaison for the mayor. Two things came out of that meeting. You all had been told that the community didn't care, the community don't come out. This is what the CRA had been saying. But you see, with the proper notice, proper time, the people came out. Over a hundred and fifty people was at that center. They spoke loudly and boldly that they want the center torn down, and for what I'm being told, many of you that were there, and many of you that heard, you know the center need to be torn down and rebuilt. Also, we know that the Super Bowl, I think the last time the Super Bowl was here, they left monies at the YETZ Center to improve the YETZ Center. We have a Super Bowl coming next year. So these are some places you can find money. You can, we have the CRA. We also have the widower, David Strass, who's wanting to make good on what his promises, and you have quite a few other partners that you all can partner up with to get this done. We're saying that it need, it's long overdue. The building you seen for yourself is not fit for people to even be there, so we're asking that this is expeditionally done, right away. Let's get moving. The train need to get rolling down the track on Fair Oaks. So once again, we just want to echo to this council that we're glad to see that y'all hear us. The mayor, we thank her for sending her proof, but they came with the wrong message. We do not want simple painting, anything like that, and so you all heard us, and I'm glad you heard us. And we don't want to be bogged down with meetings after meetings after meetings. The community has already spoken. Now it's trying to, time to move into action. So the next meeting we want to hear is about designs. You have architects that work for the city, so we don't have to go anywhere. You have people that does everything. You have engineer. So this should not be some project that we have to try to find all this money when you have people that you pay daily to do this work. So let's put our heads together and take care of Fair Oaks. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Memphis, Tampa, Florida. One of the things they need to do is dissolve this city council. They really do. No representation whatsoever, and week after week, year after year, it's the same thing. And what has happened is, over a period of time, you've got a mayor who have wrestled the power from the city council and have given that power to developers. And so what you see as a result of that is, you see city money, urban money, HUD money, all type of federal grants, going to building garages, people making decisions on interstates and just different things without the community input, and you see a mayor that never comes to this city council, not on one occasion, unless it's time to get a budget through, a billion-dollar budget through, and that's when you see them, or when they're standing here side by side with their developer buddies to get something done. There's something wrong with that. Absolutely, positively, something wrong with that. There's something wrong on the surface of it. There's something wrong when there are seven men sitting there and it's like a woman bringing them, I don't know what's in those cups. There's something wrong with that. If you watch tennis, they say, she's not a slave. She's not a slave. That's in 2020 that's being said, and you men should be ashamed of yourself. There's other reasons why this city council should be dissolved, because there's no representation out there to win the citizens complain to y'all about the things that they're experiencing, and if it's from bicycle stops, police abuse, police murders, crime inside our community, confiscating, you know, our property under the auspices of, I smell drugs, I smell marijuana, high incarceration rate. You know, you've got a crooked chief of police over there, a crooked state attorney over there, Andrew Warren. You got a crooked court system going over there, operated under Pat Frank and Judge Figueroa, and these people come right here and sit right here in these chairs and act like they're normal. There's nothing normal about them. Absolutely, positively, nothing normal about them. They sent people over to talk about Fair Oaks parks, and they sent three white people. There's something discriminatory about that in itself, and all those things have to change. And people have to, introspectively, you've got to look at yourself and say, hey, where these changes need to take place.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? No? All right. We will move on to committee reports, consent agenda. We have Finance Committee, Councilman Miranda for item number three.
Thank you, Chairman. I've moved the resolution.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number four.
Chairman, move the resolution, file number 2020-2.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Both passed unanimously. Thank you. Councilman.
Yeah, congratulations to Ms. Post. Thank you to, thank you to her for being willing to come on board. The mayor has assembled a really top-notch, you know, world-class professional team, and thank you to her for doing that and for John Bennett for doing it, but, and I look forward to working with Ms. Post on economic development, as I'm sure the rest of you all do, and thanks to USF for working this deal to let us have her for a couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respects to USF goes Bulls. We now have first dibs. Thank you very much for joining.
Councilman Dingfeld.
Yeah, I just wanted to officially welcome Ms. Post on board. She's got a great resume and well-respected in our community. We look across the street, a couple blocks away, at the New Med Center, which I think she had a big, a big part to bring downtown and to get it built. So if that's any indication of great things to come for our city, we welcome you on board. Anything you want to say?
Councilman Goos.
Well, welcoming you aboard, I hear great things about you. Mr. Carson talks very highly of you, and seen some stuff in your resume, so I'm just looking forward to a new atmosphere, going along north a little bit, and see what you can bring to us. Welcome aboard.
And if you'd like to say anything?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I think, as you know, I've spent the last, I think now, eight months working with the mayor's office and with the support of council and the transition of the new administration, and I consider myself honored to now be able to join in a more 100% capacity. We've made great progress, but as I hear you all reference frequently, there is much work to do ahead of us, and I really look forward to participating in the vision for Tampa and helping to advance the agendas that we have, and to support your agendas and vision that you have as well. It's been, it's been a very, it's been a very informative experience these last few months, and I hope to be able to apply that in the, in the path forward. So again, thank you very much for your support, and I am proud and honored to be able to join the team.
Councilman Dingfeld.
Thank you. If I could call you Carol?
Certainly.
Yeah. I think one of the successes that we've all had so far in the eight months is communication. I think that between the mayor and Mr. Bennett, Chief of Staff, and department heads, I think there's, there's real positive communication with us, and I think that's so important in terms of everybody just getting along and being on the same page and hopefully swimming in the same direction. So, and from my experience with you so far, I think you're a good communicator, and we look forward to, I think that's such an important thing, and we look forward to continuing that.
Agree. I think one of the things that was very appealing to me to be able to join the administration was this culture of inclusiveness and collaboration and accountability, and that's some of the history I've come from, from my government experience, is all about those philosophies and approaches. So again, really excited to be able to join and help move the city forward.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations and welcome.
Thanks.
We will go to staff reports. We're going to start with Mr. Wilfalk, item number five, who is the Director of Solid Waste for a ten-minute presentation on how we can have Clean Sweep to come more often and how we can lessen the price, if any, for people who want to dump their stuff at McKay Bay.
Good morning, Council. Mark Wilfalk, Director of Department of Solid Waste and Environmental Program Management. Pleasure to be able to speak with you all this morning to discuss the sweep programs and the benefits that it offers to our community. I do have a slide presentation, if they could bring it up, brief slides, just a few comments about the program. Just want to briefly talk about the origins of Sweep and how we got to where we are. If you all remember, some of you all have been here as long as I have, the program originally started out as NEAT, which was an acronym for the Neighborhood and Environmental Action Team, and that's when the Solid Waste Department and Parks and Recs would combine forces. Parks and Recs would manicure the right-ofways, the sidewalks, and whatnot, and the Solid Waste Department would collect all the miscellaneous items that residents sat out in the neighborhoods. Beautiful thing about that program is that you also had community involvement, meaning that members that lived in those communities, represented those communities, would actually come out and work side by side with us. As we, under the OREO administration, we had the Efficiency and Effectiveness Task Force that was brought on board to really analyze how we can improve services, and at that point in time is when we developed Sweep, the Solid Waste and Environmental Program, or Environmental Enhancement Program. The, it was, it now, Sweep became our responsibility as an enterprise fund department. We offered the services once a month to all, to the designated neighborhoods, and we worked closely with neighborhood presidents to make sure that each neighborhood was represented. Just a couple of overviews about the Sweep program, some of the features that many people are familiar with. It's a single, it's designed for single-family customers or residents that participate or pay into the solid waste system. It's about forty cleanups that we offer throughout the year. Each neighborhood has the opportunity now for a one-week-long cleanup in their neighborhood. And of course, we removed miscellaneous debris up to ten cubic yards. We like to try to cap the limit on that so that all of our residents and all of our participants can enjoy the benefits of the program. Just a couple additional features that we also like to highlight. We have to prohibit materials that we collect, such as chemicals and paints and solvents, but we do offer outlets for that. We've combined forces with the county, Hillsborough County, Solid Waste Management Division, and now City of Tampa residents can take those chemicals, those items, those materials that we don't collect, to any one of those facilities in the county, and then we pay for all of the usage at the end of the year. And then we also want to continuously enhance how we publicize and notify residents of this wonderful program that we have. Now, the chart that you see on the left is, kind of highlights what you would see if you log on to the website, the boundaries for each corresponding community, and then also added some of the participation in units of tonnage that we collect throughout the year. So just kind of to highlight some of the ones that you see up here, the ones in March, where you see that number peak the highest, that's going to be the northeast Tampa community. And then as you get around, maybe July, August, towards the end of the year, we normally wind up in the east Tampa area. So, program costs, something that we all need to be aware of. So when I was offered the opportunity to come down to talk about what it would take to expand those services, I also want to impress upon everyone that the Solid Waste Department is an enterprise fund department. That means we are funded by ratepayers, and we also have bond covenants that we have to maintain as well, and one of the provisions in that bond covenant is to not provide free services for our bondholders, and that helps protect the department in case we need to get evaluated for credit, or we need to go cap, or pursue additional bonds in the future. So as you can see, monthly, it costs us about $22,500 to conduct the Sweep program in the neighborhood, and annually, about $900,000. I highlighted the top three categories, cost expense categories for that program, and you can see they're just about equal. They occupy, which is disposal, that a lot of people don't realize, personnel costs and equipment costs. So those, that predominantly makes up the Sweep program and some of the numbers that you see. Now, if we expand that service and we say we want to come to each neighborhood once a month, I know it sounds like a great idea, but then we also have to be careful what we ask for. Initial projections put us around $10,800 to provide that service, with, again, those three categories being the leading expense categories. The...
Councilman Citro has a... No, no, not for these issues.
Okay. Absolutely. So, so in turn, I hear the comments sometimes, hey, let's see if we can, we can do this more often, and I've had, being in the industry for twenty-plus years, I've had the opportunity to see what happens when folks expand that service, when municipalities expand that service. And although the right intent is in mind, everyone wants to see the neighborhoods look cleaner and whatnot, actually, the opposite effect tends to happen at times, meaning that if they know, people know that you're coming to a neighborhood to collect, then you tend to have more garbage in that neighborhood, more accumulations, more miscellaneous debris gathering on the roadways. And I've seen municipalities evolve to the point where they have actually had to order additional equipment, additional employees, and it really takes their budget and it skyrockets it through the roof. But nonetheless, I still think that we have some opportunities, and we want to continue providing successful services that we have with the Sweep program, but I think we need to continue on down that road and as responsible the format as we can to our ratepayers. So we'll continue to try to control the program costs, as well as maintain that neighborhood impact and control blight in the communities. We also want to continue to increase the notifications to our civic organizations, make sure we continue to communicate with our neighborhood presidents, come to those meetings, get out, let people know what we're all about. And then we also want to continue to maximize some of those opportunities that we have throughout the city for free disposal at McKay Bay as well, and residents can always take advantage of that with a, as long as they have a matching ID and utility bill. And the significance of that is to make sure that we offer that service to folks who support the solid waste system. But we also want to, the last bullet up there highlights something that the staff is going to work on this year, and that is address qualifying, or developing addressed neighborhoods that qualify for additional collection. What do I mean by that? Well, we kind of know what our boundaries are. We know what some of the participation rates could be, and when it comes down to tonnage, how much time we spend in that, in those arenas and those designated areas. So as we continue to develop our charts and metrics and we analyze our results, we want to kind of look at those neighborhoods that produce debris above the median, above what the average household rate, set-out rate may be in terms of tonnage or pounds per home. So, and then after that, we'll be able to kind of dial in on some of those areas that may need some additional attention and see what we can do to work with some of those community leaders to, again, to help control the blight, help control accumulations on the right-ofway as well. That pretty much concludes my presentation. I'm here happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
I thank you for this wonderful presentation. The reason, what led me to ask you to come give this presentation is I'm doing some work on my condominium, and I'm doing demolition, and I took it down to the McKay Bay facility to dispose of construction debris. But as I was passing to go down to McKay Bay, I would notice along the side of many roadways mattresses, junk, trash, debris. And as I posted this on my Facebook post, how wonderful this McKay Bay facility is and how inexpensive it is, it was brought to my attention that there may be some people in our community that can't afford to do that. As I see from one of your bullet points, there is opportunities for different days for free disposable with, of course, with the ID and the bill that people get. Can we get that out to the community? How can we inform our, better informed our communities about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Good question, and that's why I mentioned earlier, we want to continue to show our presence at some of the neighborhood meetings that occur, and we feel, based on my observations, a lot of those civic organization leaders, neighborhood presidents, know their communities best. We feel working through them, that can, they can point us... We feel working through them, that can, they can point us directly to where some of those folks may be that may need some additional attention so that we can point them in the right direction and get them the help that they need.
Well, I have to say, the McKay Bay facility, I was in and out in twenty minutes. I had to do a little exercise myself of unloading my F-150 out of the back. It was very cost-effective for me. And one more accolade for solid waste. It amazes me how your crew, your personnel, could take Bay Shore with half a million people on it and get it cleaned and traffic flowing again within four to six hours. I thank you for that.
You're welcome. I would definitely pass that on to the team. I'm in your category, I'm on that side with you as well. I'm always amazed each year, you know, at the work that they pull together, not only with the Solid Waste Department employees, but all the other departments that join along us to kind of help out. So over the years, I remember when I first started, we would finish at six in the morning. Technology comes along and now, you know, most of the crews are finished around eleven-thirty to twelve o'clock. So we thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Councilman Good, then Councilman Dinkfelder.
Thank you for, Mr. Citro, that recognition of that. He's right. I know every year when I'm in the parade on the float, Mr. Dinkfelder was with us this past Saturday. We always shout out to the solid waste workers and the city employees who are out there working and doing a fabulous job. You know, we had a public comment earlier where people talked about communication. I think we lack that sometimes in certain areas of the city. And I look at some of the things we did for the Fair Oaks group. And sometimes everyone, when you get those water bills, and I'm a perfect example, first thing I look at is the bill, how much it is. I look at nothing else and there's nothing else to intrigue me to look at anything else in the bill. I'm just candid with you on that. And I think that's what happens a lot of times with our residents. But I did see where the, Mr. McGregor got on the radio station and told people about the time and when the meeting was. And that went up to everybody to understand when and where the meeting were being held. And maybe that might be another obstacle that we can jump over to, to be able to get to where we need to go by maybe doing some PSAs on the radio saying, this sweep is coming here, there. You know, because a lot of times people don't know, and again, when you talk about being able to take your garbage to McKay Bay, you know, especially in east Tampa, a lot of people don't have vehicles to do that. So that's another challenge for us on that side of town. And I know we have some workers that work with the enhancement team from the CRA. And my thing is, I think that if we have a little more notification when these things are happening and have maybe another kind of drop-off area or something, once a month or maybe every two weeks, have a place where they can go and dump whatever. I know we're talking about cost, but I don't think the cost is that much if we had a certain location somewhere in a couple areas that we can just set it, dump it, or a truck is there and you come bring it to your truck. Bring it to our truck and get it on out to the McKay Bay. Just other ideas that I think that we can do to enhance that. So we can kind of look into that. And also, if you can get with Mr. Glider of the east Tampa CRA, the environmental officer, I know he has some concerns and suggestions, so I don't know if you've met with him recently or not, but if you can get with him to see some of the things he's talking about. Because a lot of times, and I'm going to be honest with you, I love our workers, but sometimes when there's debris by someone's house, I just think that if they're picking the trash up to dump and they see this pile of rubbish or whatever, I think that we should be documenting that to where we got someone to go out there, talk to that resident, or we pick it up and do what we have to do. And I think that's another way of keeping our neighborhoods clean, especially in the east Tampa neighborhood. So if we kind of look into those kind of things, I would really appreciate it.
Right. Thank you. Definitely take that consideration.
Good morning, Mark.
Morning.
Couple of thoughts, and I appreciate the decades of work you've put in for our city. So don't take any of this personally. The, and Councilman Citro had a better experience than I've had recently at McKay Bay with my F-250. I get out there and I look, I look at that line and I go, that's an hour-long wait.
We talked about that.
That's an hour-long wait and I'm just going to circle back and come later.
John, you have to get up early. The early bird dumps the trash.
So, and I know that part of this will be solved when we rebuild the station. But I've made the suggestion last year, but I haven't seen it, that we have a sign, a digital sign out there. You've got a security guard and we could change it periodically to just show what the wait time is.
Right.
Part of my problem is, once you get in that line, there's really no way out. You know what I mean? So you're sort of stuck.
You're stuck with this.
Yeah, so if people had a little warning before they made the turn out there on the main street and it said thirty minutes, forty-five minutes estimated wait time, then maybe they'd just, you know, get out and come back later when it's a little less. Anyway, that's just a suggestion. Onto some of the bigger, the bigger issues. And Councilman Citro, I appreciate you bringing this to workshop. I think it's good. I remember the NEAT program. I was a neighborhood president back under Mayor Friedman and when we were doing NEAT. And then somebody thought that acronym was needs upgrading and we went to Sweep. I know we have a person somewhere that just knows acronyms, but anyway. The, I do recall more neighborhood people involved in, when we were doing NEAT, that neighborhood folks would actually come out and help you guys and do alleys. I don't know if we're still doing alleys with neighborhoods and that sort of thing. So I've got a couple of questions. Help me out on NEAT versus Sweep. And is there any advantage perhaps to going back to some of the NEAT concepts as related to neighborhoods?
Right. Well, I think that the, I don't think the city abandoned the NEAT concept. I think it was a matter of just getting those duties aligned with the, you know, respective departments. And by that, again, I mentioned earlier, solid waste is being an enterprise fund department. The costs that are associated with putting on the program, paying the employees and whatnot, all of that needed to be accounted for by the solid waste department. And then I know the city still has a neighborhood enhancement department that goes around and they still manicure the sidewalks and we still work with them from time to time. As a matter of fact, they join forces with us at the Gasparilla as well. So again, that's their line of the business to kind of manicure the sidewalks. And I know they have their own schedule that they move throughout the city with. But we primarily focus on debris removal from residents that pay into the solid waste system.
But are the neighborhood associations organizing during their particular sweep week to, you know, to help you guys or to do anything?
Yeah, they help get the word out. You know, those neighborhoods, some are a little bit more active and involved than others, but they do a good job of getting the word out. They really want to communicate it and in fact, they actually get upset if they find out that we're coming and they didn't get a chance to notify some of their community members.
But it's not the actual physical part?
No, not the actual physical part. I mean, you have some, pretty sure risk management would have some issues with that from time to time. But that's kind of how it evolved and how we got to where we are now.
How about the alleys? Is that, is that the, is that the other group, the neighborhood improvement folks?
Yes, we try to stay out of the alleys as often as possible. You know, they're actually our nemesis. So a lot of bad things happen in the alleys. We, you know, trying to fit those big trucks and equipment through that alley is very challenging. So we try to stay out of the alleys when possible and we actually require that folks have that debris at the curbside.
Okay. In regard to the free disposal, it's my experience at McKay Bay that it's only free of the yard waste. That if you have a mixture of construction or any other type of, you know, household waste that contaminates your yard waste,
Right.
then all of a sudden, you're paying by the ton, no matter where you live, even if you're a city resident.
Exactly. And no, we do take other items too. Some of the same items that we collect during the Sweep program, we also accept that for free at McKay Bay, again, with the matching ID and utility bill. And that's just to help control folks from trying to take advantage of the system or prevent people from trying to take advantage of the system. So if you have a couch, old sofa, TV or whatever the case may be and you need to dispose of that, you should be able to dispose of that free of charge. Shouldn't, you've already paid for it through your monthly service.
But if I've got, if I'm, as Joe indicated, and I've been doing some of it myself, if I've got demolition stuff,
Right.
drywall and two-by-fours and that sort of thing, that's not free.
Yeah, absolutely. You're correct. There is a charge per ton on that, that type of material. So it's handled a little differently. But I can tell you, that's one of the aspects of that free disposal program that we want to evaluate. That's, again, we're dealing with, you know, rules that have been in place for probably since I was just a twinkling mom and dad's eye. You know, and it's time to look at some of those aspects and controls of the program to see where we could possibly enhance that.
Yeah, and I was thinking, maybe there's, maybe there's a certain day, you know, once a month or something that's free to city residents no matter what it is. And then that way, that might take some burden off your Sweep program.
It very well could. So we'll keep fighting a good fight, you know, and again, don't want to commit to anything just yet. But we do want to go back and kind of analyze everything and take a deeper look and see what we can offer.
Well, let me ask you to commit to one thing is maybe give us a written report, you know, in sixty days or something like that.
Sure thing.
To, in regard to all of these suggestions.
Absolutely. We'll do. We'll definitely do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, was that a, was it a motion?
I can make it a motion if you wish.
I'd like to, please.
Somebody with sixty days written report back.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dinkfelder, the second, and Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So next up, we have Josh Frank, who's an urban planner. And he's going to discuss converting a section of two-seventy-five to a boulevard. Two-seventy-five, as we know, cuts north and south through the city. I think it was built, what, mid-nineteen-sixties?
Late fifties.
Late fifties, okay. So, take it away.
Okay. As soon as I have my presentation up. Button the face to the right. Okay. So, fantastic. So again, my name is Josh Frank, urban designer, principal, wide-open office. Some of the previous speakers have talked a little bit about why I'm here, but I'm going to give you the brief background as to why I'm here, what the project is, where we are now, as best as I can do in about ten minutes. So first, I want to start, in about two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, District Seven unveiled TBX. It was the fully-blown-out version of I-275, including the Downtown Interchange, Howard Franklin Bridge, State Road Sixty. And so this was the sort of impetus that we started this conversation, a lot of other conversations that still are ongoing today. But this was the beginning. And as part of that engagement process, they hired USF to go out and talk to the community about how they could make this project better, including me. I worked at USF at that time. I was a student research associate for the School of Architecture and Community Design. So that's a photo of me actually working with the community during that process. And the community hated it. They hated every aspect of the plan, the impacts, the stormwater impacts, the amount of cars that were going to be going into the neighborhood. And I see Mr. Rick Fernandez back there, he's in this photo as well. And essentially, there was a massive call for change to FDOT. And for their, to their credit, FDOT has listened. But at that time, I used that as an opportunity to study what the community had said was their true preference, which was to increase transit, reduce car trips, look at this corridor from a fresh approach without a predetermined outcome. And so I used that opportunity to study an alternative. It was basically a blank slate at that point. I had not determined if you could even remove the interstate or what it could look like or what we could do. But it was a very vigorous process that, I guess my slides have gotten a little dorked here, but essentially found out, a lot of other cities are looking at this and/or have done this. Everywhere from Rochester to Detroit, Portland, Milwaukee, Syracuse. Governor of Texas a few weeks ago said that they, as Texas DOT, are no longer going to build new highways or widen highways as a state priority. So we're seeing that this is a sort of outdated model of construction that a lot of places are choosing to do something different. So that goes to, again, some of my examples. San Francisco with the Embarcadero Freeway looks like this today, having removed their freeway. Portland with Harbor Drive, similar to San Francisco, had an earthquake and chose to remove their highway. And this is what it looks like today. It's a waterfront park. Cities like Seattle today have the Alaskan Way Viaduct. You can see it's a double-layer interstate there that runs through their urban core, are actually removing that currently. So this is not just one idea, a single moment. This is a trend that we're seeing around the country. So to continue on that timeline, this project got a little of attention. I've given a ton of presentations. I've been asked to invite, invited to talk to everybody from the Tampa Chamber to the neighborhood associations and all three MPOs have given a presentation, Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas, as well as other events, Cafe Con Tampa, and even national conferences such as the CNU Transportation Summit in DC. So that all happened about two thousand seventeen, eighteen. And in two thousand nineteen, we made a national report. This is hosted by CNU. They peer review highway removal campaigns from around the country and list the top ten that not only can be removed but should be removed. And we made that list along with Austin, Portland, and a few other cities from around the country. Meanwhile, back at FDOT, we are still looking at major expansion of the Downtown Interchange and I-275. So the conversation that we've been having as a community and us as advocates hasn't necessarily reached FDOT to the full extent. These are versions A, B, C, and D. I believe they've settled on option E, which is, in fairness, a lot smaller of an impact than these four scenarios, but it's still impactful and still an expansion. So that's sort of where FDOT is. But we've also got something happen at the same time where those of you who sit on the MPO will know that the MPO has unanimously supported the vision and the idea to study this further. It merits further study. And so they've allocated study funding for that. I believe it should be coming up here in the next six months or so. And so we'll join that list of other cities that have done this at this point. So I'm going to talk a little bit now about what the project is exactly. That's sort of the timeline and where we're at. But what is it? What am I talking about? So I'll start with what we know about I-275. This is sort of how I started my process. And essentially, I looked at, starting from I-75, we know that two-seventy-five, from I-75 to downtown, touches every transect of our city from ecologically sensitive areas, rural areas, wetlands, suburbs, university area, and suburban-style development down through our urban core, urban historic neighborhoods over the river. You see how it meanders and sort of winds its way. It's not a perfectly straight line. So it does touch pretty much every section. And essentially, the part that I studied ends at the Downtown Interchange or approximately Orange Avenue, somewhere around Encore. I looked at that as the general footprint. The rest of two-seventy-five going west, the Howard Franklin Bridge, was not part of what I've looked at. The rest of I-4 going east is also not what I've looked at. They are completely different case study. So as part of this footprint, we know that, also know that this was the heart of Tampa's urban core. These neighborhoods were dense. They were densely canopied by trees. And the housing stock is mostly some of the vernacular architecture that we see around town, historic craftsman bungalows. So important to the city and also Central Avenue, which was obviously one of the more important commercial corridors throughout the city, not only for the city, but also for minorities. So that same circle that I had on that map is where this photo was taken. You can see just the amount of divisiveness that this major footprint has caused. And this was back in the fifties. It's only gotten a little bit wider. So essentially, you take every neighborhood that we have and split them in half and limit their connections to one another. And this is an example of that. You have a massive footprint that separates about five or six neighborhoods in this photo, but there's only two or three paths underneath. That's a major issue for getting people to walk, bike, for safety, for a lot of other important causes that we look at when we look at these transportation projects. So I'm going to go through a quick list of things that we know about I-275. One, it's not regional, okay? This came out of some of my research and our project work. Is that sixty-six percent of the people who use this corridor use it two or three exits. They get on at Hillsborough and get off at Fletcher. They get on at Columbus, they get off at Sly. That's local commuting. Those people are choice transit riders. They would, if they had the option, take a more reliable transit service than drive on the interstate for a few minutes. We can see that reinforced by the exit data. So most of that traffic is going from downtown USF. That's pretty easy to see and understand, right? Number two, the interstate actually causes congestion. So it does that by a principle called induced demand, which means basically, if you have it, they will use it. If you build it, they will come. If you widen it, more people will use it. If you shrink the capacity, less people will use it. So the more you widen, the more cars you're going to get. That's a universal principle of transportation. We can see that by other corridors that essentially go to the same places. Nebraska, Florida, two-seventy-five, all go north-south. But the capacity on I-275 means more people use that, even though they all go to the same place. So third, it harms neighborhoods. It harms neighborhoods in a lot of ways. It's less walkable. People are going to have to drive to Publix instead of walking for three minutes. Noise pollution in certain times of the day and certain... three minutes. Noise pollution in, in certain times of the day and certain times of the year, noise pollution can equal that of some of the runways at, at TPA. And air pollution, which some, some of the other public comment talked about, fine particulates, all that sort of thing, impacts property value, not just health. So the rest of the reasons are, you know, too many to, to talk about today, but it's not efficient at moving people. It, it's going to age here in the near future structurally and going to need to be addressed. And then widening will require additional property and right-of-way from the city, so potentially eminent domain. So the reasons why I-275 is better as a boulevard are, one, you get the developable land back on tax rolls. No longer is that property depressed. No longer is it not generating income, but it's actually increasing the amount of revenue that we can see from the physical land that we have in our urban core, which is very limited. So that's number, number one. But also because the use has changed. If we design this corridor for moving these people, we can do so not only more efficiently, but we can do so in a way that captures that value that I said in terms of TOD, Transit Oriented Design. In the same distance, the metro line in DC carries a hundred and seventeen thousand people a day, as opposed to the interstate carrying a hundred and fifty. So we know it's not a matter of mode. Our regional trips have alternatives with the veterans and I-75. They essentially go to the same places, so those thirty-three percent do have alternatives. We can look at CSX and other options, but we also have the boulevard itself, still a six-lane arterial boulevard, carries a lot of traffic. So there's still potential there. Development will follow. This is Seattle. Since they announced they were going to tear it down, one property has sold every eleven days in this corridor for a total of three billion dollars. It's paid for the removal and the replacement tunnel and the replacement boulevard and a waterfront park. So that property value and tax increase alone is paid for this project. In our case, we have about thirty-five to thirty-six acres worth of property that we could do that with. It increases connectivity. Doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that if you take this out, you reconnect the grid. It's one of the fantastic things about Tampa. We have an amazing grid, but it completely loses its use and efficiency as a grid when we have something cutting it into eleven throughways that go underneath it. Because it solves malfunction junction. If you do not have a junction, traffic will flow much better through I-4 through downtown. And that will also allow us to elevate that portion, make that potentially a little bit better for people getting underneath. And then lastly, because alternatives move more people. This is a fantastic graphic that, you know, a, a single lane of car traffic moves about sixteen hundred people per hour. Cars may be different, but people per hour is very low compared to potentially a bike lane, sidewalk usage, or even transit usage. All of those are higher than a single use of auto lanes. So we can move more people more efficiently in that corridor through other means. So the last slide that I've got here is, how do we get there, future without I-275? So this is not something that can happen tomorrow. I'm not talking about taking pitchforks and shovels and taking it out in the next couple of weeks. But what I think needs to happen is this is, this is not just a goal, but an outcome of a bigger goal, which is reducing the amount of car trips we have as a region and as a, as a city. That's number one, but we have to get started on that right now. As part of all for transportation, as part of the mobility plan that the city has, has put out, all of these things have to work to that end to reduce car trips. We have to invest in alternatives, but that also means smart growth in land use. You can do more with land use sometimes than you can with concrete and infrastructure. It's just as important. So my, my takeaway for this, for this board is, you know, when you make a decision about land use, or when you make a decision about hearing about a transportation project, or something from FDOT, or any agency, you have to ask yourself, what is this project going to do to reduce car trips? Because we know we can't outbuild our growth. And the last example I'll leave you with is City Seattle, which is removing their Alaskan Way Viaduct, is simultaneously the fastest-growing city in the country, and they are reducing their car trips and car dependency. They have the, the, their car ownership level is where it was in the early nineteen eighties. So they are simultaneously growing and reducing their car trips. It is possible. You have to mode-shift folks and get them to use alternatives, but part of that is building them first and supporting them second. So it is possible. It's not a, not a crazy pipe dream. And I know it's hard to, hard to think about at first glance, but it is a complicated process and complicated subject, but with that, I'll, I'll field any questions you may have. I think that's the fastest I've ever given that presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I apologize if I skipped anything.
I have to step out for two minutes. I think by procedure, I have to hand the gavel to Councilman Miranda to run the meeting. I'll be right there. Sorry.
Sure.
Any questions to Dingfelder? Well, I appreciate hearing this presentation. I've been hearing about it, reading about it in the news and, and that sort of thing, but I'm glad to have the opportunity to, to talk about it firsthand. The, because to be honest, I've, I've been a little skeptical. Just because, I mean, you point out the numbers right from the start, two hundred thousand trips a day, and I'm sure it's growing every day.
Correct.
One of the things that concerns me greatly is, and, and we all know this, when you, you know, when you, when you impact, I was having a discussion with somebody. They said, we need to shrink down Bay Shore Boulevard to make it more pedestrian-friendly, et cetera. It's probably, theoretically, a great idea, but then those vehicles, right now, have to go somewhere, and they would shift over probably to McDill. And then you'd have more traffic on, you know, a two-lane road like McDill. And, and you know, that solution is probably try and get more of the McDill-based folks up on the expressway, but that's another discussion. But anyway, but the concept is the same. So if we have two hundred thousand trips going between downtown and, and Fletcher, Fowler, or what have you, and we bring that down to a boulevard level, how many trips can the boulevard handle without mass transit? Okay? And my concern is that, when you showed the three streets, the three parallel streets, Nebraska and Florida down here and the interstate up here, to me, logic would say, okay, now Nebraska and Florida are going to be crammed. And then when Nebraska and Florida get crammed, then people start cutting through neighborhoods. So you say the interconnectedness is good. Well, it's good, sort of, until they start cutting through neighborhoods, at which point they start calling their city councilmen and saying, we have too much cut-through.
Sure.
Which I can tell you, in my neighborhood, Bay to Bay and McDill, when Bay to Bay and McDill gets clogged up, all the around, surrounding streets of Santiago and, you know, Barcelona, et cetera, everybody zigzags through those streets. So.
So if I may, that, that's a, that's a common response, and probably the number one thing that every campaign that has faced this has heard is, where's the traffic going to go? And so part of, part of this answer-
And one other thing.
Sure.
In Seattle, didn't they create an alternative north-south interstate, like that went underground?
A tunnel, yes, a replacement tunnel. Same as like the Big Dig in Boston, for example.
Okay, so it's not just a function of eliminating without replacing it with another interstate?
Correct. But they also have a functional transit system that carries more people than an interstate does, anyway. So the, the larger argument is, and again, we, we, we as advocates and as campaigns that take out, for taking out freeways, hear this all the time, is where does, where does the traffic go? And to answer some more specific points of, of what you, what you've asked, is, for one, the function of a grid is that it is able to absorb more traffic uniformly. When we have a system that has a hierarchy that is essentially like a tree, where you've got the trunk, main limbs, and then smaller limbs, and then capillaries, et cetera, when one of those fails, traffic then goes to the next biggest. When you have a grid that's more uniform, you're talking one percent, two percent increase across the entire system, where that's really imperceivable in a lot of cases. So if I asked you, you know, ballpark, how many cars do you think a day are on Kennedy, and you tell me, you know, I don't know, sixty thousand, and I told you, well, it's actually about thirty-five in a lot of places, and it goes up to thirty-seven, it's really, we find that people don't know and don't feel or perceive, and it's really not a matter of much difference in time for commuting. It's one minute, two minutes. Whereas, part of this is an investment, a sincere investment in transit. So it's not just replacing six lanes of an interstate with six lanes of surface-level road. It's replacing an interstate with six lanes of surface-level road and a light rail line potentially, and CSX, and the ferry, and an investment in bike-ped mobility, so that the bigger picture is, we're not having two hundred thousand cars go down that corridor, whether it's Florida, the interstate, or Nebraska, but we're trying to figure out a better way to move those two hundred thousand people. And so if you can capture ten percent of that into streetcar or light rail ridership, and you can capture five percent in bike trips, and you can capture another five percent in being able to walk to their office or Publix instead of being able to drive to Publix, which is a land use argument, then you begin to shave that number down to the point where it's negligible. And in fact, that's where a city like Seattle has been able to simultaneously, again, grow, but reduce their trips, and it's investing in these alternatives and land use and smart growth. So it is possible, but it is a systemic conversation, and not one that is simply turn-off a valve, pressure goes up here, and we can compensate for that. It's a much more comprehensive conversation that I think, as a city, is a valuable one that we need to be having, is how can we move more people more efficiently so that way these decisions are easy to make and not complicated or hard?
Well, I'm, I'm glad, and I'll finish up, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to hear that this concept is not an isolated one, that it's hand-in-hand with these other multimodal approaches, including, you know, various forms of mass transit.
Yes.
And I think that we sure as heck better have those mass transits, north-south mass transit opportunities in place, whether or not it's bus rapid transit and/or rail and more trolleys, et cetera, et cetera, before we come anywhere near, you know, moving forward on this. Otherwise, we're looking at disaster.
Sure. And I agree. And there's all kinds of implications for hurricane evacuation and other questions. That's another subject, which I could talk to at length, but at the same time, it's a conversation worth having because the negative impacts of I-275 are massive. They, they depress property values, they depress our health. They are, the reason why our arterial roads, Hillsborough, Florida Avenue, all these other roads are, are so backed up and congested is because they are supplemental to the interstate. So when something goes wrong on the interstate, those roads are also affected, and the whole system is designed to get cars on and off the interstate. So again, it's a systemic approach, and it is truly the definition of multimodal, because without that, this really isn't feasible. And so that's why you see cities like Portland and Seattle and Rochester and all these other places have heavily invested in transit in order to get to this point.
One other quick question. Let's, let's say for argument's sake, twenty years from now, this is in place, and we've got all these multimodal things going on, but you still have out-of-state people coming down, and they hit, they hit the border up there at Pasco, and typically, they've had a choice. They go left or right on seventy-five or two seventy-five. Now, they go either to the boulevard, but I guess my point is, if folks are going to Naples, well, no, that's not even a good example. If folks are going to St. Pete, where, where would you think they would go at that point? Would they go down seventy-five and then pick up the Crosstown, I guess, and come across?
You could do that. You could do that. You could also take the Veterans Expressway. There's US nineteen. Regional trips have a lot of alternatives. And even in a-
Because clearly, we're taking away a regional trip alternative.
However, I would also say we're providing more, whereas if we had a functional regional CSX system, for example, that, that person could park and ride to then take a CSX train to St. Pete, or connect to a ferry to get to St. Pete. There, the point is, is that the, the regional trips and the local trips need alternatives. It's not an either-or, and it's just as important to, for those folks living in Pasco County, if, if that is sort of an anticipated area of growth, right? Some of these peripheral suburban areas, to capture that growth in an, in an urban scenario that those folks maybe don't need to have a car. And so it's just as much an argument of taking cars off the road as it is providing alternatives for the cars that are on the road. It makes it easier for everybody in that case.
I'll, I'll yield the floor, because I've asked a lot, but I, I would be curious at some point to hear about evacuation, but go ahead.
Thank you very much, Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of things that I was going to bring up have already been discussed. The big thing that, and Josh, you know I've been following this. And I've, I've suggested you to many neighborhood associations and community boards to speak about. The thing that I'm most impressed with this is that the footprint doesn't necessarily change. And you're adding multi, multimodal, such as rail, bike paths, wider sidewalks, something that two seventy-five doesn't have right now. We do realize that this is not going to happen overnight.
Yep.
However, with the alternatives, it's not the citizens of Tampa that cause our traffic problems. It's the people coming in, the hundred and fifty thousand each and every day coming in. With, to Councilman Dingfelder's point, if we take the trucks off of two seventy-five and divert them down to seventy-five to I-4, that's ten percent of the traffic problem right there. If we can get people up in Wesley Chapel, Pasco County, to ride rail, that's another ten percent. So I've always been a, a proponent of this plan. Again, it is going to take years. It's going to take public mass transportation to fit in with these plans. But Josh, I, I've always liked your plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you. I really, like Mr. Dingfelder said, I, I'm not opposed to anything until I get all the facts, or for anything until I get all the facts. But when you go down and just look at history, there was two main shopping centers in the city. There was others, but the main ones were downtown and Ebor City. What happened there? What happened was that when Britton Plaza opened up and Northgate opened up, people saw something new. They didn't have anything like that. So what happened to the two areas that were downtown and Ebor City? They started collapsing. When they started collapsing, yeah, the interstate helped. I'm not going to say it didn't. But so did the twelve thousand cigar factories of people working that were no longer needed.
Sure.
That didn't help either. And so there's a lot of factors that went in as to why we are where we're at today. And, and in Northgate and Britton Plaza, what happened to them? They also collapsed. When the inside malls came out, more traffic went to them. So there's an evolution of things. That was happening to those big malls.
Yep.
They're suffering real bad because you got what? One finger. You can order anything you want. And you go to the doctor, the doctor tells you, I want you to walk two miles a day or five miles a day. And we're so stupid that you call the doctor, and in five, five days, the doctor asks you where you at, and he said, I'm in Sarasota. He asked me to walk ten miles a day for five days. So that's how we are. So when you look at these things and you realize, how did we get here? We got here because of laziness. Nobody wants to walk, and I'm not saying everyone. Don't get me wrong. I don't want ten thousand calls coming in today. But what I'm saying is, you don't have to walk, get a finger, you dial, and most likely, if you're something prime or gold, you get it the next day. Delivered to your house. All you got to do is open the front door and pick it up, unless some burglar picks it up for you. But these are the things that are happening in society. You want more quicker with less energy and less effort. So what are we trying to say?
Well, I, I would respectfully disagree.
The public is confused what I'm saying. We're saying, go walk and do this. You built the stuff, and nobody wants to walk.
Yeah. I, I would respectfully disagree, because I think the, I think the majority of growth in cities today are in urban cores. The city, every city center that I visit and that I've ever been, been, had the pleasure of working with or working on, has seen tremendous growth. You can, you don't have to look any further than our own downtown, downtown for every city from Newport Ritchie to Lakeland is having a renaissance. Because I think the return to being able to walk to a corner grocer, or being able to walk to a bar or brewery that you're a big fan of and meet your friends for a game, it is coming back, and is one of those things that, across the larger span of humanity, cities has always been, have always provided and has always been popular. It will, it may come and go in fifty years' time, but the larger picture, cities are vibrant places that support diversity, support mobility, both physically and economically. And it's something that I think is universal amongst, amongst humans, is that we want, like to be together and like to, like to be able to access all those things.
I'm not going to disagree with you, because those neighborhoods, exactly what you talked about, had to walk because you only had to walk one block because you had a grocery store, small grocery store, and every community in the city attacked.
Or a school.
And what happened, when the big boys came in, the big box stores came in, you went to see something new, and you liked it. And you had a cashier, and you had a credit card. You never had a credit card before. Or you have a little pencil that just say, pay me at the end of the week.
Sure.
And, and that's how society has changed. So these things that you're talking about work and don't work, because society has changed mindset-wise. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilman Carlson.
Just quickly, you mentioned that the MPO supported studying this more. Is the MPO studying it, or is DOT studying it? What's the status?
MPO is studying it, yes.
And when is that coming back?
You'll have to ask them on where they're at in their timeframe. I believe they had a scope writing session with a consultant and are going to be putting out a bid at some point in the near future. I think they're, they may have pushed that back a little bit because of their general planning consultant process that they're going through right now, selection process, but outside of- but outside of that, I believe it's sometime this fiscal year.
Well, thank you for taking the time to brief us and please keep us posted on what the NPO says too.
Sure. And I'm happy to meet with anybody individually and talk about this as well, it's a very complicated subject and is a great debate, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, you know, I always say that I'm proud that I've always voted against TBX and TB Next and any other name change that they put because it's foolishness, you know, you're building, but you're building backwards. Because if you look at this, and you've studied it better than anybody else, how the interstate and urban renewal and everything else was so aggressive, you showed the picture of how much land was cleared and how many buildings and homes were lost to bring this interstate through. And now you look at it and it's always congestion and too much traffic and what are you going to do to fix it? But I look at it as the people that live around there, what about their exposure to any other illnesses, any kind of increase in cancer because the cars aren't moving freely at all times, when they're sitting there stagnant, they're constantly dumping, you know, the exhaust is dumping out into that environment and they're nearby and that's what they're breathing and their children are breathing. But if you look at, you know, the original concept of the interstate through Eisenhower, through the Eisenhower Interstate System and its original purpose, that's fine for the 1950s, pulling up the streetcar, the manufacturers for the automobiles and the tires saying, you know, why get stuck with an outdated trolley or a streetcar when you can have the freedom of the automobile and take the great American road trip, you know, freedom with your family? And now we're going full circle, back to why do we need so much focus on the automobile when we want other options? So the Boulevard concept is not crazy, I think it's exciting, it's something new and different, and you back it up with how it can work because people figure, well, with all those cars, where are you going to put them? Look at the capacity usage of Tampa Street or Florida Avenue going north and south. I don't use the interstate, I try to avoid it at all costs here because I'll take Tampa Street into downtown and I can make it within 12 to 15 minutes during that morning rush, unless I hit all red lights. So you see that there's not a lot of traffic on those roads, you see that there's other options, you know, not being Dale Mabry, but Nebraska, Florida, Tampa Street, whatever it is, that would help people get in and out.
14th, 15th, 21st, 22nd, 50th, 56th.
Yeah, I go on and on, 20 seconds is another one, 15th is another one. My escape route from Ebor City back to MLK is 15th and there's never any, there's never any traffic. So I think this could work, it's worked in other cities, I think of places like Paris and the Champs-D'Elise and whatnot, you've showed other places here in the United States where the interstate has come down and it's functional. And you think about the real estate values, the values for the homes that are around that area and whatnot. But when you see a photo like this, this aerial shot that I'm looking at of the junction that malfunctioned, is, it's amazing, I mean, those are people's lives where people grew up, where people had businesses and it's all wiped out for concrete. So I appreciate this, I'm a big fan, I've heard this presentation and it's full one hour length.
Uncut.
The uncut, uncensored version, and you do a lot of great work and you should be very proud of yourself that you're doing this for us, for our community, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So item number seven, as we go into the workshops, there's a request here from Sal Rogerro of Neighborhood Empowerment that he requests a continuance for a date beyond February 13. Any questions or any motions? Councilman Good? All right, we have a motion to reschedule this item, continue it to the March 26th, is that a workshop date?
Yes, it's a workshop.
That's a workshop date, and we have a second from Councilman Dingfelder and comments from-
Did you want to put that on at 10:30 AM? We already have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, I guess, six items, I believe. But do you want to make it to 10:30?
That'd be fine.
Trying to try to settle it at a time?
All right, so we have a motion for 10:30, March 26th, and we have a second now from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Now we go to item number eight, and we have the legal department here regarding the community benefit ordinance, Rebecca Kurt.
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney, I am here on item eight, which is a report on a community benefits ordinance, I previously supplied you with a memorandum and I think I met with all of you as well, but I'd still like to go through a presentation for the benefit of the public. This motion has been around for a while and it's morphed a little bit, but the original motion, which I went back and pulled, was for the legal department to research and prepare a report on a community benefits ordinance so that the council can learn more about it and what it means for the future of the city. So I'd like to talk a little bit about what community benefit agreements were historically. Historically, they were private, private agreements between community groups and developers when they were coming into major, coming in with major projects, major developments. These major developments, particularly going into low-income neighborhoods, and the neighborhoods were feeling that they were the most impacted and not receiving any of the benefits of the agreement. These originally happened first in California when the studios were expanding. One of the first ones that came into effect was the DreamWorks Studio proposal, and what happened in that situation is there were multiple neighborhood groups who were trying to have their voices heard, but when they finally grouped together in Los Angeles under one umbrella organization, they were able to negotiate directly with the DreamWorks Studio for certain things to address the impacts of the neighborhood. DreamWorks Studio never actually ended up getting built, but the neighborhood still ended up with a $5 million job training facility. There was another one in Hollywood after that, which was a massive theater and retail space, 1.2 million square feet, and the neighborhood had concerns about traffic, environmental concerns, criminal activities, some of the concerns that you hear about when you have a major new redevelopment going into a community, and they were able to negotiate agreements to hire locally and pay living wages. After the success in California, it spread throughout the country. Some of those were not as successful, there were ones in New York, in Brooklyn and Bronx, I won't go through all of them, but some of the concerns that came out of some of these others, which were not particularly effective, is number one, there was not a good enforcement mechanism, so these promises were made and if they were not fulfilled, there was not necessarily a good mechanism to enforce those. The other concern that was had is sometimes you would have one neighborhood group who was speaking the loudest negotiate the terms of it, and because there was no government involvement, there was a lack of transparency and other people in the impacted neighborhoods felt left out of the process. Some of those were eventually enacted into things, development agreements with the local government, but I do want to make one distinction here because in the city of Tampa and basically in the state of Florida, there are two different types of development agreements. The type of development agreements that I typically bring to you are entitlement development agreements, like you saw for, say, the Midtown Development. In the Midtown Development, that was not a public-private partnership per se, where the city wasn't donating the land, that was a private development. And with those types of development agreements, we are just establishing what the entitlements are, we're not giving them anything. It's a statutory process, we're not allowed to waive things, we're not allowed to give them anything through that project, but it's basically establishing in advance of the project what everyone's expectations are. We agree that they're entitled to this much development, we agree that if they mitigate in these ways, that will meet our mitigation requirements. The other type of development agreement that you see oftentimes when the CRA is involved is when it is a public-private partnership and there is some sort of public investment in this redevelopment. In 2016, the city of Detroit passed a referendum that required, it was called a community benefit ordinance, and it basically required a community benefit agreement or a process to reach a community benefit agreement. It applies when there was a public-private partnership, there was different thresholds that you hit, one was if there was a 300,000 contribution from the city and it was a $3 million investment by the private developer, there was some level of notice and public hearings, and then there was a second tier for if there was a million dollar contribution from the city of Detroit and it was a $75 million project investment. I won't go into all the details, but in short, when it was one of those major projects, what would happen before there would be anything given by the city or any sort of development agreement by the city where they were giving even tax incentives or land, there was a process that had to be gone through where the impacted area was identified, there were public hearings held out there, the community nominates certain particular people to be on a committee that would negotiate some community benefit agreements, and then there were enforcement provisions in place. That's a fairly new one. I did note in my research that, well, it does seem that there have been some successful agreements that have come out of that ordinance process, there are still private ones being negotiated, in 2019, there was a privately negotiated one, nobody really knows the terms of it because the city wasn't involved, but the community still felt that there was a benefit to pursue that in certain times. So what does this mean for how this tool could be utilized in the city of Tampa? Again, we have two different types of development agreements and it wouldn't be appropriate to require negotiations through the entitlement development agreements because again, those aren't negotiated, those are just agreements about what people are already entitled to. But when the city is in fact entering into a public-private partnership, this sort of concept is something that could be utilized, and in particular in the city, you know, that contracts under the charter are negotiated by the administration. However, when the CRA is involved, that is certainly an area where the CRA, when the city council is sitting as a CRA, could establish some community benefit policies or procedures. The details would need to be worked out as you're sitting on the CRA, but certainly that is, that would be appropriate mechanism for city council to consider if you did think that these community benefit agreements were something that you wanted to pursue. I'm available if there are any questions.
Are there any questions, Councilman Good?
Well, Ms. Kurt, thank you for your work, you know, I always say, don't tell me what you can't do, what you can do, and obviously you came at with some things that we can do. So I applaud you for your efforts to work on that because I think it's something that we could utilize, especially with all the CRAs that pretty much are in my district. And people are always saying we have a development, what do we get back, things are going, and when the city's giving things, we need to be able to get something back in return. Mr. Shelby, I don't know what the galleries are, if council can ask for this to be sent over to the CRA or do we need a motion of CRA for Ms. Kurt to come?
If I can, Mr. Good, I see Ms. Zelman here for a procedure for something that city council wishes to have placed on a CRA calendar. Mr. Chairman of the CRA, I don't know what's the appropriate thing, I guess, would a motion of council then to be, to refer this to a CRA, to be placed on a future agenda, would that be appropriate?
I certainly think that you could make a motion to place this discussion or place a question if you have one on a CRA agenda.
If that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Good, I would like to go ahead and have you make this motion and defer it to CRA.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Good?
Oh, I just discussed it. If I may, going back in history, what you're talking about is a benefit to the community because of someone wants to do something that, of creating more traffic or some to the effect. And going back in history, I remember, I think it might even have been the first one on the corner of Armenia and Osborne, there was a bank that was way back in the late 70s, I think it was, called the People's Bank, that wanted to open up. And one of the caveats that we needed was for them to participate in the installation of a traffic light, which is still there, the corner of Armenia and Osborne. Is that what you're talking about in reference?
It could be, Chairman Miranda, even in your entitlement agreements, if there is a direct effect, like the bank, for example, was creating the need for the new traffic light, you could do that through that process, but this is, this is something a step beyond that, when there are effects that maybe are not quantifiable through your current land development code regulations, and it's a step beyond that to consider some of the things that aren't necessarily land use related, like traffic impacts, that can be traffic impacts, but it can also be, you know, not, I don't want to get into too many details about, you know, what you may be able to do, but in other jurisdictions, they've done some hiring preferences, some job training requirements, things that you could not do through your entitlement process.
I'm just bringing this as an example, and if I remember the amount, and you can check the record, I think it was $7,500 at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, anybody else? No, we have a motion from Councilmember Good, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Kurt, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kurt.
We'll go to public comment, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to discuss this community benefit ordinance, have anything to say, you'll have three minutes to speak at the lectern. Seeing none, thank you very much. We'll move to item number nine, this is the workshop.
It's past 10:30, so we're all right.
Yeah, we're at 11:03, so we're good. This is the workshop for the banning of single-use plastics, single-use plastic bags, styrofoam containers, et cetera, on city parks, city land, or venues. This is similar to what has been enacted by the city of Orlando, we have our attorney here, Jam McLean, to discuss this.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and city council members. The motion, as it was stated on the agenda, is that city council wanted to discuss and then I would be here to answer any questions. I submitted a report that gave you the status of the law at this point in time, I'd be glad to summarize that for you if that would be helpful in your discussion.
If you could, because we talk about preemption all the time in Tallahassee dictating to us, so I'd like to know what we can do within those legal boundaries where, not even to be legally defensible, where it wouldn't trigger any kind of litigation that works, that's why it's specific to, you know, city parks and properties, so if you could.
Well, we are squarely within that preemption area, and as I mentioned within our, within the report that I submitted to you, there are actually three statutes that overlay the preemption of the regulation of the use of polystyrene products. The primary one is Chapter 500, Section 90, which preempts the regulation to the department, which is the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, but the preemption, it goes on to say, and this is on the first page of your report, it goes on to say that the preemption does not apply to local ordinances or provisions thereof enacted before January 1st, 2016. So if a local government had already adopted an ordinance regulating the use or distribution of these products, then that would stand, that would not be preempted. There's an argument as to whether if you amended that ordinance, whether those amendments would be preempted, similar to what we experienced with the fertilizer ordinances. But it goes on to say that it does not limit the authority of local governments to restrict the use of polystyrene by individuals on public property, temporary vendors on public property, or entities engaged in contractual relationships with the local government for the provisions of goods or services unless it's otherwise preempted by law, so it kind of circles back around. I spoke with Mr. Chris Castro with the city of Orlando yesterday and he was extremely helpful, he's their resiliency officer over there, and he put together their program at the direction of their mayor. It is restricted to city property, so they are outside of that preemption concern. They have, what they've done is they've adopted a policy in conjunction with their ordinance, which they have a sustainability ordinance. It's not focused and it's not implemented as an ordinance, it's implemented administratively on the public property, which at this point you could do, but let me continue on, within the legislature at this point in time, there are two bills that are not moving, they've been filed, one in the Senate, one in the House, that would repeal the preemption, so a light at the end of the tunnel. However, like I said, they've been referred each to three committees, which is not abnormal, but they're not moving and calendaring to hear those bills. I spoke with a lobbyist for the League of Cities this morning, she doesn't anticipate, of course, that would be looking into the future, but she doesn't anticipate that there would be much movement expected from those two bills, the lobbying from, I believe it's the Federation of Retail Associates, is very heavy on making sure that those bills don't go forward. There's also a court case from the city of Coral Gables, which they adopted an ordinance restricting citywide, and it was challenged and has gone up to, at this point in time, a writ of cert has been filed at the Supreme Court to hear it on the constitutionality and of the preemption. The briefs have been filed, there's nothing calendared, there's no indication of whether they'll take it up and make a decision. All of that said, is what, that puts you in the position of being restricted from the regulation and use of the polystyrene products to only city property. What my recommendation at the end of the report was, at this point in time, given that you've got a court case out there, given that you got two pieces of legislation, although they might not look positively on what, how that would come out for city authority, it's still two variables that you might want to take into consideration before you start to move forward on implementing any kind of restriction.
So if I wanted to propose a ban on single-use plastics at, for example, an event at Curtis Sixon Park, a city-owned property, I would run into legal issues, or you're recommending to wait to see what happens with, what's up in the air now?
Yes, I mean, two things, you have two questions there, yes, my recommendation for your second part is to wait. That doesn't mean that you couldn't move forward- That doesn't mean that you couldn't move forward in working with the administration to coming up with a program that might be implemented later on down the road. Because remember, the preemption, unless it's repealed by those legislation, will limit you to the regulation of on city property. So therefore, it wouldn't be implemented through an ordinance. It would be implemented through another methodology administratively.
Okay. Because my goal was to focus on city properties, at least we can start there, we're, you know, we're not throwing ourselves for a legal mess. But look at it this way, single-use plastic bags, as we get at a Walgreens or a CVS, we tell folks not to put them in the recycling bin, because when you take them to the recycling plant, it jams up our machine. So now it's creating a hazard and an additional cost to us. Wouldn't the state or a court look at it and say, I mean, this is an assumption, but these are causing, you know, serious harm to the machine, they're causing a higher cost because they're jamming up the machine, stuff like that? I mean, it's, it's so simple. Or styrofoam and single-use plastic bags live forever in the environment. Styrofoam doesn't break down for hundreds of years. I mean, can't they look at it like that? I mean, I'm just, just talking out of the box here. But yeah, my goal is to start with city-owned properties, which, we have so many events at Curtis Sixon, we have so many events at Riverfront Julian Lane Park across the street, where we're protected from any kind of litigation because it's specifically public and specifically city. Or either way, it could lead to a legal battle somehow. Right?
Well, the way that it's set up with the city of Orlando, and like I said, Mr. Castro was very helpful, they actually restrict the use of all three of the products, which is plastic bags, expanded polystyrene, and, and the straws. Which he did an extensive evaluation of the, of the program before he brought it forward. So I've got some of his materials, which I was only able to receive yesterday, but they were super helpful because he had done at, at that point in time, which is about a year ago, a survey of the jurisdictions and what they had proposed to adopt, or what they had adopted. There's an awful lot of jurisdictions, there's a significant amount of jurisdictions that adopted something, and through an ordinance. And whether they're actually implementing it or enforcing it, that's, that's the difference. Coral Gables was the first one out of the box after the preemption was adopted by the legislature. And I believe that that is the basis of why it was challenged in court to set the line. And so the rest of the jurisdictions are probably doing the same thing that I'm recommending to you to do right now, is just to wait and see how that court case plays out, to see if we would have any more. Yes, as far as, back to your question, as, as far as adopting a policy to administratively implement it on city property, we could move forward with that. What they have done in Orlando is they have an application process, that if you're going to have an event on city property, you submit your application, there's all these kinds of questions that you have to answer. And in addition, now, they have the green space. And so Mr. Castro's group also reviews that application, asks different questions, and asks them to complete a survey, so that he would have the information of what is intended to be done, what they were going to use, that they are aware of what they can't use. But he's not allowed to hold up that permit, but the information is getting out there. And he said approximately eighty percent, he gets those surveys back from the applicants that are going to use the public property. So there is, you know, there's, this is a new program that's going on over there, but he's seeing some progress moving forward.
All right. Councilmembers have any questions? Councilmember Miranda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No.
When, is it legal to have the legal department draft this ordinance and pass it just on first reading and hold second reading indefinitely until this lawsuit is settled?
That's a really good question. Because you would not be implementing these restrictions citywide, it would be implemented administratively. And so the administration would have to set forward a program, and much like I would recommend that Orlando has done, is establish a policy that's related to an ordinance, and, and then implement it that way. And here's the distinction that, that I just recently found out this morning on how they operate over there. So the, what I'm told is, the mayor sits with the council, and there's a committee that worked on the policy. And so the policy was brought forward to the, to the mayor and the council as to be implemented administratively. But in our case, ordinances are brought before the council, and policies are implemented through the mayor. So we would need to thread that needle on how it would actually be implemented.
In fact, when you look at this here, here again is, everything that's invented has become a failure, in a way. Not everything, don't get me wrong. But years back, everything had a value to take back to the store. A bottle of pop, I'm gonna say pop, so I don't mention other Coca-Cola and Pepsi Colas and all the other in the world, had a value of five cents. And you returned it back, and you got credit for five cents. And it changed because of things that came out of inventions of plastic being quicker and lighter to carry, and things of that nature. And this is where we're at today. And when you look at electric cars versus gas engine cars, electric cars were here in the nineteen hundreds. They just weren't mass-produced. When Ford started building the cars, the electric cars stopped because he was building the cars in masses, they couldn't keep up. So these are the things, and now what do we have? In the next fifteen, twenty years, I say twenty-five percent of all cars, maybe higher, are going to be all electric, and trucks alike. So everything that was invented, it's gonna be reinvented that was already invented. If that doesn't sound confusing, I don't know what the hell does.
Before I go to Councilman Goode, the point that Miranda brought, Councilman Miranda brought up is, the satisfaction of enjoying a soda for twenty minutes causes harm to the environment because of that plastic bottle, if it's not recycled, for how long? Or eating that twenty-minute meal, that styrofoam container, for how long? It's gonna outlive us all. You know, when we have archaeologists excavate historic sites, they find skeletons, they find where homes used to be, they find jewelry and pottery, they're gonna look at our civilization and find styrofoam and a bunch of nonsense that we've dumped out into the, into the environment. So, you know, it's silly. Councilman Goode?
I guess I'm curious what the Orlando is doing as it relates to penalties enforcement. Was there any discussion with them, what they're doing, or at all? I'm just curious how we would enforce this, so how this would be implemented?
Well, because it would be on our, our property, first, they would, they would, they have put it into their contracts for any of the vendors that are going to operate with on our property, that they would be prohibited from the use or distribution of these types of projects. I do not have a fine or a penalty kind of, of matrix from the city. It would be a breach of their contract, so that, that would, that would end the contract. If you were on city property and you were breaching the agreement, and you, you violated your agreement, potentially, you could be asked to leave city property. That would be something that would be within the purview of, of the administration to...
I guess the agreement would be whoever is renting the facility, but I'm talking about patrons that are coming to that event. So I'm like, does Orlando have something, they have some kind of enforcement mechanism? There's some type of penalty for those patrons, or we don't, we didn't research that far?
Well, you're not regulating the patrons, you're regulating the users of public property. So if you're the event coordinator, and I'm, I have an application with the city of Orlando to use a, a piece of city property, then the relationship is between the vendor or the event coordinator with the city, not with the people that are attending.
Thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, it's really sad that, once again, you've got a situation where big business goes up to Tallahassee, and like the retail industry, which I think was very much behind this preemption ordinance, and they go up to Tallahassee, and effectively, they buy the votes. And they buy the votes, and then they preempt our ability to adopt common sense local ordinances that, as Mr. Maniscalco indicates, will have some real positive long-term benefits for our children and our grandchildren. So Tallahassee's asleep at the wheel, and, and it's being bought by, by those businesses, in my opinion, to, to preempt our ability to do the right thing. Now with that said, I started looking at that Orlando ordinance last fall, and I had an intern, she did a real good job, we met with Mr. Mayon and some other folks. And I think Orlando's taken a real positive step within the constraints of the preemption ordinance, and, and, and I think we should do the same thing. So, you know, with that, I'm, I'd like to move to, for us to go forward and direct legal, legal to draft Tampa's version of the Orlando ordinance, and, and bring it back to us as soon as possible, whatever council feels appropriate. I don't think we should just sit tight and wait and see, because to best of my knowledge, nobody's challenged the Orlando ordinance yet. I think it's relatively safe, I don't think we're at great risk. And if anything, the legislature has basically, within their ordinance, or within their statute, has given us the ability to at least control our own property. So to the extent we can do that at the convention center, at our larger parks, you know, our larger venues, when Gasparilla comes, and Super Bowl comes, and, you know, those sort of things, that we'll at least have a little bit of control on our own property. So that would, that would be my motion, that we direct legal staff to come back...
Do you have a date?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a date?
A month, a month or so, I think is fair. And to come back to us with Tampa's version of Orlando's ordinance. Thank you.
Oh, could I, could I? Go ahead.
Go ahead. You have a second?
Well, let me see if I get a second.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, but Citro would like, Councilman Citro would like to speak.
If, if, if I may. Councilman Dingfelder, I, I totally agree with you. It's time that the city of Tampa does take charge, and I will second your motion. But I, I really feel compelled to say this. Myself, you, and Councilman Goode went to League of Cities. We saw the presentation by Orlando on being a resilient city and changing their ways as far as plastic, energy, and all sorts of things. I am on board with the single-use plastic, and before legal gets, gets concerned, Mayor Castor is also working with Tallahassee to get several types of grants for our city. I do not want to step in her way. However, ladies and gentlemen, our hands aren't tied because of preemption. Every person that's sitting in the audience that wishes to speak on single-use plastic, your hands are tied, because the city of Tampa can't make decisions on its own because, forgive me, Tallahassee thinks they know better than what we do sitting up on, on, on this council. And it's time that we need to talk with people in Tallahassee and sit down, not only on this single use, but for our tree ordinance that took five years. Not only on that, but a 5G wireless that we are being preempted on. Not only that, but short-term state facilities that we have been preempted on. So Councilman Dingfelder, I agree with you. I will second your motion. I mean no offense to anyone in Tallahassee, I don't want to stand in the way of the mayor, who might have some plans on getting grants for this city, but it's up to the citizens to call your state representatives, your state legislators, and tell them how you feel about your hands being tied.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have a second from Councilman Citro. Any discussion before we vote, I'd like to hear from the attorney. Any other discussion? Okay. Take it away.
Okay, a couple of items. One, the motion was to draft an ordinance. And as I indicated earlier, the city of Orlando has not enacted an ordinance regulating the, the use and distribution of this, of the plastics on their property. They've adopted a policy so that it's administratively implemented. They do have an ordinance for sustainability, which as you well know, the mayor has, is one of her initiatives, and is moving forward to that end. So there, I don't know, obviously, what the intent is of that effort, if it will result in an ordinance which might address that and provide the basis for this policy. The second is something that we haven't addressed at this point in time. The preemption comes with the legal potential of being challenged and being exposed to attorney's fees. If someone files the notice that we've adopted an ordinance that exceeds our authority and, and crosses that preemption line, it's in chapter fifty-seven, one, twelve, Florida statutes. Now, the only thing, and, and so that you have the full scope of what you can and cannot do, and what the consequences of that might be, is if you, if you would proceed to adopt an ordinance, and then this notice is filed, at that point in time, you can rescind the ordinance, repeal it, you have thirty days to make that decision, because now you see that you are fully exposed, and someone is going to challenge it, and you may have to pay attorney's fees. So I wanted you to have the full scope of what, the consequences of what your motion could be.
Right. And, and we always want to be, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
We always want to be cognizant of, of the financial risk to the community, and we want to minimize that as much as possible, but we also want to do the right thing. So I point to your memo, which you did a great job, and specifically, on the first page, section five hundred dot nine zero, and it says, "This statute does not limit the authority of local government to restrict the use of polystyrene by individuals on public property, temporary vendors on public property, or entities engaged in a contractual relationship with the local government for the provision of goods or services unless such use is otherwise preempted by law." So that, like I said earlier, they've created this opportunity for us to address this by ordinance on our own property. I think it's right there playing, playing in the statute. And I know you guys will be very cautious and creative to make sure that we stay within the limitations of that. But, but the fact that Orlando did it by policy means that, and like you said, the mayor sits with them, or maybe it's a different setup, or something like that, we don't have the benefit of having the mayor with us weekly, you know, like St. Petersburg or what have you. So what we can do is, we can do it by ordinance in this body, it will go over to the mayor for signature, and hopefully, she'll agree.
Well, then what I would respectfully request is, if your direction is for us to draft that ordinance for your consideration, we could do that, bring it back prior to first reading, so that you could see what was actually in, in that. And we would then time it so that it would be post-legislation, post-legislative session, so that we would know at least that portion of what may have happened. We may not have the outcome of the case, but you would at least have what the legislature had done. So if...
You're saying, you're saying second reading, post-legislative?
No, I'm saying if we, if we brought back a draft for your review prior to first reading, so that you could actually see what would be proposed for first reading, so another workshop, say, and post-legis, legislative session, which ends at the beginning of March, so maybe at the end of March, beginning of April, bring you a draft for your consideration. And then if we arrive at a draft that you agree is acceptable, then set it for first reading thereafter. So you've got your time to give as much possible to see what actions actually get taken. But we're working at your direction.
I guess, I guess they've moved the session earlier than it used to be. So...
Every other year. This year, it's January to March, next year, it'll be back to March to May.
Well, I'd still like to, at a minimum, see that draft come back to us in, in February, within thirty days from now, and then we can decide where to go from there, and maybe first reading would be after the legislative session. But I think we, just to keep things moving, and to let folks know that we're serious about this, and we're moving forward on it, my motion would, would be, you know, thirty days from now, to at least see the, the draft.
Councilman Miranda?
Thank you very much. If you rewind the tape ten or fifteen minutes, that's the same question I asked, passing it on first reading and holding it until the legislature made up his mind, and I didn't know if that was legal or not.
I'm sorry that I didn't address that question.
No, I, I'm not debating, I'm just, I never got an answer, but I didn't want to bring it up publicly.
I apologize.
Ms. Zelman?
If I may, I, I, the only other concern that we have is, as Jen mentioned, there is a pending case in front of the Florida Supreme Court, and that was actually addressing the other Florida statute in chapter four oh three, that preempts to the state the regulation of certain plastics and containers and things like that. And our concern is moving forward until we see the outcome of that case. You know, as Jen mentioned, we don't know yet whether the Supreme Court is gonna hear it, but we should find out within the next few months, and/or we should find out the results of it. Our concern is moving forward... Our concern is moving forward when there is this question as to legality of the city of Coral Gables ordinance. So what we're asking, and I, I think, you know, you all can still make a motion to ask us to explore the feasibility of moving forward. You know, my suggestion is the mayor has the resiliency, sustainability effort underway. We can certainly look at it in that context. Um, again, Orlando had, as, as I understand it, a sustainability, resiliency ordinance, and then consistent with that ordinance, the city then adopted the policy that Jen was talking about, and that's something we can look into, is whether this, our city could adopt a similar policy if we had an ordinance like that in effect. So I think my point is, we're not at all disagreeing that this is a noble, worthy cause. We just want to thread the needle and not, um, end up with another lawsuit on our hands given the current environment. So what we're asking is more of a timing question. Let us, you know, not take any affirmative, concrete action until we see the results of both the legislative session and the court case.
But you said draft, so...
Yes.
You know, there's no, nothing, no ordinance is being signed. You know, I, I think we'll be very cautious with it. Uh, a draft in thirty days per the motion of Councilman Dingfelder.
Specifically, March fifth.
March fifth. We have a second from Councilman Citro. You know, I don't use straws. I hate styrofoam to the point that styrofoam grosses me out. I don't use single-plastic bags. I have the reusable bags in my office, in my car. If I go to a Save-A-Lot where they charge you for bags, I go and, you know, if I use a reusable bag or I just carry this stuff out. I try to do my part, even if it's one person, to prevent dumping more and more into our environment because you can't recycle everything. Um, I feel bad drinking out of plastic bottles, so I get one of those filters from the tap and just use a glass at home or just use a reusable thing. So I try to do my part. You know, we can't kick the recyclable aluminum can down the road. We're trying to, you know, do our part now. Um, and I think this is noble and worthy and, and, and long overdue because we've polluted so much. At least we're moving forward, even though it's twenty-twenty, and doing the right thing. So we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder with a second from Councilman Citro. Aldo?
And just to send the staff reports, Mr. Dingfelder? Staff reports from March fifth?
Yes, yes, sir. And we want to hear from the public before we...
All right, so before we vote, we're going to take it to public comments so everyone can speak. And then after you speak, we'll take a vote and of course we'll listen to your comments. So you have three minutes to speak. Approach the lectern and state your name and address for the record. And you can start now.
Hello, this is, all right.
They took the mic away, that lady. They took her word.
No, there's no mic, you're good.
You're good?
Don't believe him.
(laughing). All right, you need my address too?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, all right, Christian Leon, twenty-ten East Palm Avenue, uh, number fourteen, three nineteen, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-oh-five. Um, I am here today speaking on behalf or as co-chair of the Suncoast Rise Above Plastics Coalition. So I know, uh, several of you know me, um, I've spent the past four years, uh, involved with that coalition over in St. Pete. Um, I worked very diligently with a lot of people to, you know, we had seventeen meetings before the St. Pete Hurrs Committee. They deliberated this for almost two years before coming to the ordinance that they decided to pass. Um, so I just think it's, uh, it's funny to, to speak after the city or the council attorneys have spoken. Um, I understand that this is a very, or it's perceived to be a very controversial subject and it's perceived to be something that we really have to worry about, but I can tell you that in all the time that I've been involved, uh, that fear has been extreme since the very beginning and we've had to work through it. So just like I said before, St. Pete had seventeen different meetings before they did anything and they still deliberated on it for five hours, um, before they took a vote. Um, so I just want to lend, uh, my experience with this and what I learned during that time, uh, to this whole process. Um, there's a whole bunch of people that have been involved in the Tampa Bay area and especially in Pinellas in this. So I can assure you that whatever St. Pete has on the books is something that they're not worried at all will trigger anything. Uh, I can tell you the same is true in Orlando. They wouldn't have passed anything if they were worried about it at all because every city and municipality except for Coral Gables and Gainesville, um, once they saw the reaction from the state and the reaction to that and got involved in the legal, uh, in the lawsuits, uh, everyone else has taken the most conservative measures possible. So I think in Tampa, at least, we know that if we piece together the laws that are currently existing, we have absolutely no, nothing to worry about because that would mean that Orlando would be worried and St. Pete and other cities would be, and, and they're not. No one's worried. So I know that we can do that off the bat. Um, also, um, I know my parents will be unhappy or happy about this or whatever, but, you know, I went to a great law school, they paid for anything, for everything, like good Latino parents. They've questioned me for the last, I don't know how many years about why the hell I'm not an attorney.[947.48][947.48](laughing) And I can tell you, at least I can bring that to this. Um, I've worked very closely with the attorneys over in, in the city and we're working with Stetson, uh, with Professor Long from the Stetson University or Stetson College of Law. So we'll have like the best, um, assistance and guidance possible in terms of legal matters.
And that's, that's a great T-shirt. Would you mind showing that logo for the cameras?
There you go.
City of Tampa, right there.
There you go.
That T-shirt.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next person.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Stevens. I live at five oh five B RIAV, Tampa, three-three-six-oh-six, and, um, I'm a volunteer with the Sierra Club and thank you all for taking leadership in, in, um, getting us away from the single-use plastics. And I think I'll just concentrate my, my statements on just a few other reasons to limit. Um, one of them, I'm reading, I was reading a report by Food and Water Watch talking about just the manufactured plastics, which are made from petrochemicals. And the abundance of cheap frack gas has really driven companies to find more uses for plastics. Here's a picture of, I think that's in Houston or Louisiana where some of this petrochemical production is. Um, and one of the things they quoted was in two thousand eighteen, one estimated that there would be three hundred and thirty-three more facilities producing, um, plastics in the next decade. That's a forty percent increase in plastics. Um, and, you know, the plastics contaminate the, the air and the water when they produce it and have toxic chemicals. So that's just, there's money in producing plastics and driving us to use it. So that's kind of one of the things we're fighting against. Um, and just a couple other things, um, you know, as you talked about the disposal of plastics and they're there forever and they never break down. They, they break down to smaller, smaller particles into microplastics. And one study by USF St. Pete found that there's four billion particles of microplastics in Tampa Bay. So, and that just mostly comes from, well, it comes from clothing and other things, but also from the breakdown of these large plastics. So just a couple other things to think about, um, and, uh, you know, thank you for taking leadership in this and doing what you can to, to reduce...
Councilman Citro has a question.
I, no, first of all, I'd like to thank you and people like Phil Compton that, that bring this to our attention. Uh, soy-based plastics.
Yes.
Are, is, is Sierra Club opposed to that?
That's a good question and, um, I think, uh, it's probably better, at least they will decompose. From a decomposition, um, they are more biocompostable, so from that perspective, they are better than petrochemicals, which just do not break down. So...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I am Julia Gorska-Freeman. I reside at, uh, one zero zero nine West Charter Street in Tampa, three-three-six-oh-two. Um, personally, I want to applaud you for taking leadership on this issue and moving us forward at such a wonderful pace. And next, I am here to share a statement from Imar Kelly, uh, former chair of the Suncoast Rise Above Plastics Coalition and their current communication director. Uh, Imar apologizes for not being able to speak here in person, and on behalf of her, Suncoast Rise Above Plastics is a coalition of seventeen area nonprofits ranging from the Florida Aquarium, USF Marine Biology Department, to the Sea Turtle Trackers. Uh, serves as a convening point for collective efforts to address contamini- contamination issues in Tampa Bay. Last year, we successfully worked with environmentalists, the business community, and the city of St. Petersburg's Office of Sustainability to pass an ordinance which just took effect on January first of this year. Um, to focus on that ordinance and the lessons learned from it, our coalition prides itself on being business-friendly and makes it a priority to talk to businesses and learn from them. We've seen that businesses and environmentalists can work together to effectively address issues in a way that benefits everyone. Over the past year, I've spoken with countless businesses impacted by the ordinance and, uh, um, the plastic straws and styrene, and I'm happy to share the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. A survey of all five hundred and fifty-two affected businesses was taken, and the results, an overwhelming majority, more than ninety percent of businesses, reported a positive attitude towards the ordinance. They gave many reasons for their support, some reflected personal views, but, uh, many reflected a strong business case. They were aware that consumers want to see strong environmental leadership from the business community and support those businesses who are working to improve their green footprint. And, uh, I want to share one more lesson. The primary concern regarding single-use plastic regulations is a cost burden. It could potentially place on businesses. But by combining a single-use plastic restriction with an on-request-only regulation, St. Petersburg has successfully addressed that issue. Uh, businesses are reporting at least a fifty percent reduction in single-use items. This reduction leads to cost savings, which are then put into buying more environmentally friendly materials, and, uh, they're actually saving money compared to when they were handing single-use plastic items to every single customer. So I thank you for your time and for your leadership on this issue. Please don't hesitate to reach out to the coalition with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Allison Date, and I live at two-four-zero-three West Chicago Avenue, Tampa, three-three-six-two-nine. And I am so excited that I came today. I wasn't going to come because I volunteered at the aquarium, but I learned about this yesterday and I said, "I want to know why, what why we keep putting forth these things that our, our community wants and they get knocked down by the state, um, at the state level or maybe even national level." And, uh, so I'm so, um, grateful that all of you are here to protect our lib- our liberty of that, of maybe having some control over what happens where we live. Um, I came here from a place that was very environmentally, um, active. And so when I first went to the store here, um, I put my bag down on the counter to have my things put in it and they didn't know what this was. And so I, and maybe you don't know what it is.
I can't see it.
It, it's, it's a bag. It's a bag instead of using the, uh, the plastic bags. So I think that there's, I'm so happy that you're taking the move that you can, even if it's just at the local level, you'll be setting a model of expectation for what needs to happen. And I think it is about each of us as individuals making those choices and setting an example. And I try to, but it's very hard because everything's in plastic. So, um, and I don't think people know, a lot of people don't know, that plastic comes from oil. And we are in a fossil fuel, uh, country, I mean, economy, and that needs to change. Where it's killing us. So it's all related. I think it was John Muir, Muir, who said, "If you touch one little part of nature, you see it's all connected." So I came here first about the tree canopy, trying to protect that, and we, you guys spent lots of time on that, and then it was like, "Oh, no, you can't do that. We're still going to cut them down." And so when I read that they weren't going to allow this ordinance to go through, I'm happy that you're going to be trying to protect it and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Kelly Benjamin.
Look, the two of those bags, man. I have, I, I don't remember the ones that pulled up.
Happy New Year, Kelly.
Thank you, Councilman, and, and I can get you a bag, uh, if you would like. Uh, we can, we can get one stamped with, uh, Christian's shirt if you want it. Uh, Kelly Benjamin, three-one Lambrecht. I am so excited that we are finally, uh, discussing this issue here at, at council. I've been working with, uh, Christian for the past several months. We've reached out to a lot of business owners in our community, uh, people who've been with the city, people who operate food trucks. I have a spreadsheet going, I'd be happy to share with you, but the, as someone else said, the, the, uh, response has been overwhelmingly, uh, positive. I've spoken with people who conduct, uh, festivals, uh, here at, at Crotas Hixson, uh, Gasparilla Music Festival coming up in, uh, a month or so. You guys should all attend. They've already committed to using one hundred percent alternatives to plastic, uh, a huge thing for the cities. Right on the bay, we're a city on the bay, waterway right here. As a country, we produce over a hundred billion, uh, we use a hundred billion plastic bags a year. Four hundred cities now, uh, have enacted, uh, bans similar to what we're talking about. Uh, I would, I would love if, uh, here in Florida cities could, um, push something even stronger because, I mean, this is, it's very simple, it's the right thing to do. It keeps our communities clean. It keeps our marine en- environments healthy. Um, and it's, I, I commend, uh, Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Citro for the comments about the, the preemption issues that we're facing in the state. It's really unfortunate that our hands are tied to, to that extent, but, uh, I think that it's, it's crucial, uh, that we enact, uh, this legislation and, and/or this policy as soon as possible. Uh, I, I, when, when it does come back for a second reading, um, you know, this, this, this hall can be packed with the people that we've discussed with, uh, this issue with over the course of the last several months, uh, even before, uh, what happened in Orlando. Um, I think that we, we're at a point where we can lead on this issue and become a community that, you know, th- this stuff doesn't go away, as someone mentioned, it's going to be here, uh, when, when my, uh, grandkids are around. That plastic's still going to be at the bottom of the bay. It's horrible, it's horrible, you know, just to, to have it out there and, and trash in our communities. Um, last thing I wanted to say is that, um, uh, the, I'd, I'd love to work with the council moving forward on, on this issue and I think that, that, that the time is now for it. I thank everyone for, uh, allowing this to, to be here and I'm, I'm really excited that we've already got a, a second and we're moving forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yeah. All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, a second from Councilman Citro, and a comment from our legal team.
Wouldn't it be possible just to have the motion read again? I just, I'm, we're trying to make sure we understand exactly what...
Mr. Shelby suggested I, uh, restate it just to be clear and concise, Mr. Chairman. So the motion would be that the legal department return, uh, March fifth, um, during staff reports with a draft ordinance that's modeled after Orlando's policy and that stays within the constraints of the state statute.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman...
And, and just one fa- final comment as related to, as related to, um, single-use plastics, uh, uh, the use of single-use plastics on city property. And specifically, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to echo what some of the folks said and I really appreciate, uh, Julia, you and this, uh, Mr. Leon and the rest of you coming down here, uh, and working on this. Um, and one of the things that really struck me, Mr. Miranda, you've said this before, specifically about your vehicle, um, that you're leading by example.
Kelly, wait a minute, I have to correct myself. It's an electric car, but it's made out of plastic.
Oh, okay.[1719.21][1719.21](laughing).
I was just thinking about that. Most of it is plastic. I tell myself what position I put myself in. I swear to God, I was thinking about that, so what am I going to do now?
But if you're like me, which I think you are, Charlie, you'll be driving it for twenty years, so, uh, that's a good thing. Anyway, um, but anyway, that, that in doing this ordinance, that we might not have a huge impact, but we're sending a message to the community and that this is important. And this is as far as this council can go unfortunately because of the state legislature, but it is important and we are trying to lead by example. We let the rest of the community model their behavior after what we do. And so, um, I think it's a great step forward. I'm confident the mayor will be with us and, uh, that's my motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Citro.
That could still stands.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. Thank you very much.[1776.13][1776.13](applause). That concludes our final workshop.
It was unanimous, is that correct?
It was, well, I didn't, you know, he, Lewis isn't here, so...
Oh, uh, Vera being out.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Um, so that's it. We're going to go now to, um, information reports and new visits by council members. I'll start with Councilman Carlson.
Thank you. Um, I met with a...
I met with a representative of, or one of the architects of Alford Transportation yesterday, and the Supreme Court review, I think, is coming up next week, and then hopefully within the next thirty days, they'll have an answer on it. One of the things we've been talking about for a while is, is once, if that money comes through, there'll be lots of money for sidewalks and roads and everything. But also, there'll be money for us to do more comprehensive plans. And, and so just to get the ball rolling faster, I would like to make a motion that city council request the transportation department to consider creating a citywide comprehensive sidewalk plan and that Gene Duncan appear before city council on February 20 under staff reports to discuss.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, the second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
And there is, or there was a list at least last year of proposed sidewalk projects. So they have, you know, they have some.
Yeah, so the idea here, and I'm going to ask the same thing for bicycles, the idea here is, you know, we had the problem in Bay to Bay, which was partly about, it ended up being a discussion about driving, but really it was an issue about safety of sidewalks and, and then bicycles were included in that. But I think if we had a citywide vision of where all the bicycle lanes would go and all the sidewalks would go, then as drivers are looking at it, feeling threatened that we're going to take away all their driving lanes, they can say, okay, I'm willing to give up parts of those roads as long as the other roads are prepared. So I'd like to make a motion, the city council requests the transportation department to consider creating a citywide comprehensive bicycle lane plan and that Gene Duncan appear before city council on February 20 under staff reports to discuss.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
The last, the third one is a little bit more complicated. I will pass these out. Here's one for the clerk. I came into receipt of a document that was sent from the city water department to Tampa Bay Water last week. And you'll note on here, it says from, it has mayor's letterhead, but the chief of staff, who was not aware of it, is not copied, and the mayor's not copied on this. If you go to page, it's labeled page two, and I highlighted it at the bottom, it says, under reuse, and this is the, the city water department making a statement to Tampa Bay Water, they say, "The City of Tampa intends to implement the Tampa Augmentation Project and will eliminate its need for wholesale water from the Tampa Bay Water System." It sounds like a policy statement to me, and so I would like to, I would like to make a motion to request the water department to appear before city council on February 20 under staff reports to discuss the document submitted by the City of Tampa to Tampa Bay Water dated January 21st, 2020, specifically the bottom of page two, and explain why staff chose to state that the city will no longer buy water from Tampa Bay Water and will move forward with the Tampa Augmentation Project without city council approval.
Councilman Miranda.
I don't, I don't know what the exact, what it means, but I don't think it's something without council approval, but that's just my statement. But let me say that from what I know about Tampa Bay Water, the City of Tampa, City of Tampa has been all the way across at six million gallons a day, and essence of City of Tampa has bought very little water from Tampa Bay Water in the last two or three years. This year, we, because of the eighty-two million gallons a day productivity peak that we can't break, we will be buying water from the City of Tampa, from City of Tampa will be buying water from Tampa Bay Water in the month of January. However, the City of Tampa's water consumption use from Tampa Bay Water is minimal, under two percent of the amount of water the city uses on a yearly basis.
So just to clarify the motion, and I can read again if you want, but all, all I'm asking them to do is come back and explain why they sent a policy statement without getting, getting our approval on it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Dinkfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else, sir?
Nope, thank you.
Have your report.
Twenty.
Under staff reports.
Thank you.
Yep. Councilman Miranda.
None, sir.
Councilman Citro.
Council members, on February 27th, I've asked for a human trafficking workshop at 9:00 AM. What I am asking for in making a motion is that this item agenda be moved to the first item agenda that day. Because we are going to have public staff, TPD, Hillsborough County, and all sorts of people, so that we may be able to get in, have their reports, and have them out as soon as possible.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro and a second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anything else, sir?
Nothing furthermore, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to have staff from community partners, partnerships to appear and report on the FAN, Tampa Homeward Association of Neighborhoods organization regarding decline in neighborhood participation in the future of the organization. I'll list the report at a regular session of city council on March 5th, 2020.
We have motion, Councilmember Goode, do you have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Chairman, if I may. I was in here last week that the passing away of the FAN leadership, one of the individuals who worked very hard, not only in his own neighborhood, but to make the city better, Mr. Jerry Frankhouse passed away and were deeply passed. He was an individual of great character, an individual who might have had a different view of things that you had, but always respected the results, whether it was positive or negative, and worked on to get things done. And on passing, I just want to say that we miss Jerry, we miss the family, and they're doing what he's done in the past made the City of Tampa a much better place to live.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Goode, did you have anything else? Councilman Dinkfelder?
I'm good.
All right, I have to pass this gavel. So I have a memo from the chief of staff here, setting up special call workshops to be integrated into current agendas to provide an overview of departments. And the memo, I don't know if everybody else got it? No? No?
Big shot, good.
So, do I just, I'll just read it?
If I can, if I, we could, if you like, Mr. Chairman, we could make sure that every council member has it because it, there's a decision point that's going to be in there. I can make sure you have, every member has it before tonight and you can discuss it tonight's meeting.
All right, so we'll do that, is we'll photocopy this, you'll read it tonight, and then we'll have better clarification. And I'd like to file this Form 8B regarding a vote from last week on an item of a conflict. I was, I am a member of the board of directors for the Tampa Theater Foundation, and there was a parcel that was right next door that had to be voted on for vending and whatnot. I'm abstaining to assure a fair proceeding to prevent any potential bias and prejudice because people on that board were opposed to this. I didn't think I could be fair and impartial being that, you know, I'm literally stuck in the middle. So I abstain from it. Here's the form, and I verify with Rebecca Kurt and our legal staff to make sure that everything was done properly. So that's it. May I have a receipt?
Their safe file?
Motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned until 5:01 PM this evening, this afternoon.